Fullerton City Council to order. Madam Clerk, could you give the short version of how people may participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For anyone interested in participating remotely in this meeting, you can do so through Zoom. You can enter, go to zoom.us/join, I'm sorry, zoom.us/join and enter meeting ID 99277895986. You can also use that ID number and call on 669-900-9128 and follow the prompts to enter the meeting and make public comments.
And now our clerk, Lucinda Williams, will call the roll.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye, here, present.
Yes, here, accounted for. Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
And Councilmember Silva is walking in. I'm going very slowly so we can hear his lovely voice here. And I'm sure Mayor Protam Dunlap will be here shortly.
We will now hear public comments for a closed session on closed session items only. Seeing no one in the chambers, I can ask whether we have remote contacts?
Do we have Zoom comments?
We do not.
Okay.
Okay. With that then, we shall recess to closed session. I call the June 1st, 2021 closed session for the City of Fullerton City Council Regular Session Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please convey how those at home may participate in this meeting?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. People who would like to join this meeting to make public comment via Zoom may go to zoom.us/join and enter Zoom meeting ID 957-90508608. Those who would like to call in will use that same ID number and call 1669-900-9128 and follow the prompts as they call in.
Thank you. And with that, would you please conduct the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Mayor Protam Dunlap is not present this evening.
And with that, we are pleased to have Pastor Max Copley with us of Friends Church Fullerton to please provide the invocation. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the honor. Before I pray, we wanted to say that for the last six years, we've been praying diligently for the mayor and the council, and we're very thankful to be partners with you. And if there's anything we as a community can do.
We could use that continued assistance and help.
You've got it.
Thank you.
Let me pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we're trying to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, and instructions. We have talents and abilities and time to work. However, only you can see perfect detail at the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transents all of our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for any pride. We know that that separates, so we pray for humility and service and wisdom and oversight. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be, set us free from worry in order that we may work together efficiently. Bless this meeting tonight and all those who are present, as well as the lives of those who we encounter afterwards. Ready to make every moment count in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask all to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Silva if he would please lead us.
Thank you. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
And Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report from closed session?
There's no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd ask the council members at this time to declare any ex parte communications since our last meeting. Seeing none, we will proceed. We have a presentation this evening involving the city's new city website. And I have Anissa Levis to make that presentation. Thank you, Ms. Levis.
Can you hear me all right? Perfect. Okay, so this item is regarding our new city website. This presentation is purely informational. Staff is not seeking direction from the city council at this time, but we're just taking this opportunity to make the announcement and to notify the public that we are indeed getting a new website this week. So really briefly, I just want to talk about what the project includes. It includes a new cityoffullerton.com, a new Fullerton PD microsite, and a new Fullerton Public Library microsite. The project includes also a new Intranet. This is what city staff uses internally to research policies, procedures, and just kind of keep an internal database of important items. The project also included CMS user integration, 1,500 pages of content migration. That's just fancy speak for saying that our previous website was over 2,000 pages, and we migrated 1,500 of those pages over to the new site. It includes a new premium design, and the overall project took about 11 months of work. So we started off with a kickoff meeting last July, and we started off that meeting with a community survey. We put that survey out to the public, and it included over 250 respondents. So what did this survey include? Mostly, those who use that website, we discovered that over 90% of folks who use our website are Fullerton residents. There is a good portion who also work in Fullerton who utilize our site, and also a good portion who are just primarily interested in our parks and recreation and cultural programming. We also were able to identify that the average age group who utilizes our website are between the ages of 45 to 64 years old. We also posed the question on, you know, how was our previous site? Is it easy to navigate, difficult to navigate? And we found that a majority of folks unfortunately found our previous website to be slightly to moderately difficult to navigate. And we asked, you know, why do you visit our website? What are the reasons? And as you can see here, we have our top 10 reasons. People want to see the latest news, the latest events, catch up on city council meetings, as well as COVID-19. We sent this survey out during the middle of the pandemic, so a lot of folks were interested in gathering some information regarding COVID-19. Just some additional findings. 50% of users stated that they would like to see better search results so that they can improve, so that they could find what it is a little bit easier. They also wanted a larger calendar of events, news items. A translation option was one of the most highly requested features, better FAQ sections, and much easier to find contact information. We also discovered that a little over 50% of those who visit our website do so by using their mobile phone. So after we discovered all that from the community survey, we went into designing. So this just shows a couple of the mockups that we designed with our contractor to get this website going. So ultimately, the new website has a lot more modern digital features, including social media fees, options to create surveys, forms online, workflows on the back end for us at city staff. But most importantly, this new website is now completely ADA compliant. It allows for folks to increase fonts, it has a consistent layout, alternative tags, and much easier to access call to action buttons. And with that, I'd like to announce that the launch of this website will be initiating this Wednesday, June 3rd, with an anticipated go-live date of June 4th. So that is Thursday. I do want to state that it is possible that the launch could be delayed up until Monday the 7th. However, we don't anticipate that. We do anticipate a go-live date of June 4th. And with that, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just showcase the website really quickly, just so you can get a preview. Lots of pop-ups here. Okay. Well, here it is. This is our new City of Fullerton website. As you can see, we have a new emergency banner feature. This is helpful for us in case of, I mean, in COVID-19, it would have been helpful. But we could also use this for instances of like traffic, traffic alerts. God forbid ever an earthquake were to happen. This is a good emergency response feature on our site. One of the most requested features from our community was enhanced search features. So we developed in contract with our, actually, one second here. I'm actually going to open this with Google Chrome. That seems to be an outdated browser. All right. So we have a "how do I?" feature, which is great because folks can go, you know, how do I pay for business license? Click a button, and it takes you right to the page with call to action buttons. So that's an enhanced search feature along with this search bar right here as well. We have a new hero banner. We can update this with whatever information that we want. Here's a sneak peek of the new Fullerton Police Department website. New widgets, making it a little bit more fun and interactive with bigger text so folks can see and get engaged with our site. New news section, that was one of the more requested items from the community survey. A new calendar of events, social media widgets, and of course, you folks up there on the dais with the city council. We have a "find your district" feature, so if folks don't know exactly who their representative is, they can type in the feature here, click search, and say, oh, it looks like my representative is in District 2. That would be Mr. Mayor Protam. Go on here, take a look, and let's say they can't speak English or read English. We now have a new translation feature, which will translate everything here to Spanish or Korean. Our site is also mobile enhanced, so whether you're on a tablet or a phone, it can be scaled down so that it's always scaling down and sizing, fitting to the screen that you needed. So this is what it would look like on a mobile phone, as you can see here. Back to the homepage. After the meet or council, we have a new Fullerton at a glance widget. We can change these numbers to whatever it may be. Just thought it'd be a fun intuitive way for folks to see just some basic data and figures. And lastly, we have a spotlight feature with the latest and greatest information that might be helpful to our community. We have a section here for vaccine news that leads to the Orange County Healthcare Agency. And lastly, I just want to highlight our new coronavirus information page. Where to get tested in Fullerton, all of our local orders, testing, case counts, vaccines, information on our eviction moratorium, latest news, and where to get information and resources. And with that, I don't want to take too much of your time, but I happily will take questions if you have any.
Yes, are there questions for Ms. Levis?
Thank you. I do want to give a quick shout out I forgot to mention. I did not do this project by myself. I was working with RIT Department. His name is Stephen Yee. He was really the backend master with everything going on, so I just want to thank him for his coordination on this project as well.
I think the translation feature is going to be very helpful. That's extremely simple, the way that you demonstrated it, so good work.
All right. Well, if there are no more questions, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We are now ready for public comments for a regular session. This would be items that don't appear on this evening's agenda. And as usual, speakers will have up to three minutes to make their comments. Direct them, please, to the council, to the chair. And we ask for proper decorum at all times so that we may focus on the issues. I wanted to mention that I received an email, which I thought was on target, from someone who's a regular at council meetings or following council meetings. And she suggested that not only should I ask for proper decorum from the public, but also from members on the dais. Occasionally, things get a little bit heated, and there's occasional personal attacks. And to the extent that we could model the kind of behavior that we ask the public to provide, I think that that was a good recommendation. So I'm going to thank that person for that comment. And we would be ready to receive public comments. How many do we show at this point?
I have eight people registered to speak in person.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please check in in the lobby and/or with the city clerk to be able to make sure that you get heard this evening. And with that, the first speaker.
Whoever's closest to the mic is welcome to come to the microphone and be the first speaker, and if everybody else will be lined up on the wall behind them. And whoever's first can go right up to the mic and start speaking.
Good evening. One last thing to mention here is this would be the time to pull any consent calendar items if that is wished by members of the public. We have council comments following, which we can also do that. But anyway, good evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the councilmen. I want to just take this moment to appreciate your commitment to leadership, getting our city through this difficult time. And I, just like many others, have been thinking that a lot of the vitriol we've heard towards you is certainly undeserved, and it's a shameful attribute. This is something I appreciate you mentioning that should be discouraged. There are proper ways to get our opinions known. And one of the comments I'd like to make tonight is about our infrastructure. It is also an emergency level crisis, just like you mentioned that the budget was an emergency level crisis, yet we are not seeing a discussion in the direction of an emergency level relief for our infrastructure. I'm afraid that after the Euclid project is done and the Brookhurst project that's been approved is completed, we have nothing else planned or moving in the direction of really solving the big chunk of what's going to be left throughout the city. Just in the discussion outside with folks, it is, and this is something everybody mentions here, that you can literally tell when you're crossing over towards Buena Park on Rosecrans or towards Brea on State College, within inches, you know you're not in Fullerton. And this is, well, we all know this reality, yet I have, I'm afraid that we have not seen the kind of prioritization on infrastructure that we would have liked to see from this council. I would urge you to please consider bringing an update, agendizing update every two to three months if possible. We know that funds are limited. You can already tell from the budget discussion today that there isn't going to be a lot of general funds left for infrastructure. Therefore, where is that emergency relief? Where's that effort, aggressive effort to get those kind of grants? We'd really like to see an update in that direction. So just to give you one more example, my nine-year-old was in a dark street, it was at nighttime, and he was walking on the grass, and he fell from some, from part of the pavement that was elevated, almost hit his eye on the brick. This was just last week. He was all bruised up. I could have spent the entire night at my emergency room in St. Jude Hospital, and I'm glad I didn't have to, but those are the things that kids have to face. And I realize that you're supposed to start with your name. My name is Faisal Kazzi. I'm a nearly 10-year resident of Fullerton. I'm a physician at St. Jude. I also serve on the California Commission on Aging. And thank you for the website. Thank you for your leadership on the budget issue, which is critical for discussion today. And I hope that we can re-energize our efforts on the infrastructure issues and make it a first and foremost priority once the budget is tackled. Thank you so much.
Dr. Fazi, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Donovan Rinker-Morris. I'm a resident of right where Anaheim, Fullerton, and Buena Park meet. And I wanted to express my hope that your remembrance as of Memorial Day did better honor to our fallen than your choices for Pride Month have so far. I learned the importance of understanding how public respect is shown to other people in Kandahar, Afghanistan shortly after Memorial Day in 2002, where I was a visiting fellow as part of my law school. As I wasn't attached to anyone on the ground, I could travel without an entourage, unlike the soldiers and civilian groups that the Americans had sent. And I could see how different men attached to the different warlords treated one another on the ground in Kandahar. In particular, how warlords intentionally showed public disrespect and disdain to other peoples, men. That might consist of stealing flags, stealing symbols, or otherwise showing public disdain for no benefit other than to express their power and authority. Now, the American troops and the government officials knew about it. They seldom made it into media reports because who cares, really? The American and British troops I spoke to did grasp exactly how this could blow up. And even back in 2002, they were well aware of the risks of ignoring this sort of a thing. But the civilians sent by the US government dismissed those sorts of concerns, wrote ever larger checks to ever more corrupt warlords. One high-ranking appointee told me I should stop bothering with such trivialities and just go home. Well, I don't know, and nobody knows, if any American soldiers lost their lives in the years that followed as a result of the disrespect that was shown and tolerated and even encouraged by people who should have known better. I don't know if that's a factor in Fullerton, and I doubt I would expect it, but bullying is real, and people respond to the symbols and the use of symbols that they see in public. They will abuse any time they see an opportunity to do so and inflict harm on whoever they identify as weak. So I really hope that Fullerton will do better and will alter how it has conducted itself on this small, little gesture that might mean a great deal to a fairly large community and might otherwise be neglected. Thank you for your time, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker. Thank you and the council members for having me this evening. My name is Stephanie Wade. I'm a former Marine infantry officer and a transgender woman, and I came here tonight to speak about the same thing that Donovan Rinker-Morris was just speaking about, the pride flag. I wish to point out that while I don't currently reside in the City of Fullerton, I'm a former Fullerton resident, and from 2018 until January of this year, I was employed working in the City of Fullerton. And at the moment, I reside just across the 91 freeway in Anaheim's Colony neighborhood. And I spend a great deal of time shopping here, socializing here, going to dinner here. And this recent incident around the pride flag has made me rethink that. I find it extremely disturbing. I should also tell you that I'm the co-chair of the Lavender Democratic Club, and we have several members of that LGBT advocacy group here who live in Fullerton, some of whom are going to speak this evening. And we're extremely disturbed. I wanted to say this this evening, not in any partisan way, in fact, rather the opposite. I think our country's been through a great deal of turmoil. Much of it has, or a considerable amount of it, has targeted people like myself, and I wanted to just share something about the reality of what that's like. On a routine basis, I am insulted by store clerks, people in restaurants and bars, simply because I don't fit a gender binary and adhere to a gender norm that some people think is the only way to be. Yet I hasten to point out that I spent nine years in the Marine Corps defending my rights to live as I am, to dress as I want, and to live as I want. That pride flag symbolizes that. It symbolizes a place of safety, and it's a signal to people that the community, that the city, that the leaders of the city voted, which they did, to support that pride flag. And for two years in a row, it hung outside on the flagpole in a place of honor in accordance with pride. This year, the city, in spite of Councilman Zara pointing out in advance that it needed to fly on the 22nd as per the city's flag ordinance, it didn't. Staff told the councilmen that the flag was lost. You, Mr. Mayor, said, in a quote to the Orange County Register, made light of the situation, saying that, "Well, rainbows are ephemeral. Sometimes they get lost." This is the sort of thing that encourages bullies. I don't know what's in your heart, sir, but I can tell you that language like that is a loud signal to bullies.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kathy Plate. I live just three blocks away, and I've been here for about five years. And to be honest, I almost didn't come tonight. Stephanie actually let me know about the meeting. I was literally out just on a walk with my two kids and my wife. And I thought, I mean, it's just a symbol. Is it something, you know, it's still out there? I'm proud to see the flag. And I remember in 2019, when Councilman Zara was able to get that through and get it up, I felt really proud that this was a place we were starting our family. And so I almost didn't come and thought, oh, you know, maybe I'll watch it on Zoom, maybe I'll submit a comment. And then I thought, you know, what message does that send to my two little kids? Do we want to go backwards? Or is it really the principle of the matter that, you know, I remember even my four-year-old the other day, he'll say he loses something. He didn't lose it. He hides it. He puts it away. He knows better. And I think sometimes with kids, with the city, with adults, we have to be reminded of the principle of the matter and really stick to what matters for the future. And I think right now, I'm proud to see that flag out there. I would be much prouder if it was on the flagpole, and I would be even prouder if the city took some more steps. This year, there have been more trans women killed in this country already than all of the year before. Hate crimes are on the rise, and it's something that concerns me. I worry sometimes about how our kids will be treated when they get into the public schools. I have hope. All of their friends think it's great that they have two moms. But it's something that concerns me, and I don't want us to be going backwards. I want us to go forward. So I want to thank Councilman Zara again, not only for the pride flag, but he helped me out the other day. So thank you on a totally separate city matter. I feel like roads are always coming up. But I just want to thank you all for your time and to think about what message you
Good evening, council members. I have two things to speak about this evening. One is with the new cannabis code enforcement officer coming in, I happened to see something on a public television from SoCal Connected. It's called Cannabis Country, and it was made in 1920, in 2020, on PBS. And I thought, maybe you might relay that to the individual, and they might review it, and there might be something in there that would enhance their knowledge on their new job. The second one is that whenever anyone on the front of the dais and in front of the dais leaves, and they may be, or they're out for the council, that particular council meeting, and they may be brought up in public comments. If they would leave word as to why, especially when it's detrimental, that they have, that they're not here, it may give the people that are speaking a little bit more understanding. I was very upset with people, with the officer that Chief Dunn put in his stead last council meeting, and he did not say exactly why the chief was not here. And the chief is generally always here. This is part of his, part of his job. So it's only fair that the people know why he isn't here. And I thought that was kind of a shame that his stead did not say, well, the chief was out for certain reason. And because I heard so many people say that he was hiding. And if he's hiding, anybody, any lie that would be said could be easily found out. So that's the thing I say in case there is... So that's the thing I say, in case there is someone being of subject of public comments or comments on anything, I think it's only fair that somebody say why the individual is out. We don't need to know unless it, unless it's brought up. So anyway, I hope that my information has helped a little bit, and I wish the new cannabis officer, when they take effect, good luck, because they've got a hard job. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council members. Miguel Alvarez, member of the community for over 20 years, resident of District Four, in your district, Councilmember Bruce Whitaker. And I'm here to address the flying of the LGBT flag. I'm a Latino gay man who has made Fullerton his home for over 20 years, and I purchased a home recently in 2020 here, went to Fullerton schools, rode the bus from the Maple area to Laguna Road, where I was constantly harassed for being gay. I didn't even know I was gay at the time. I was in fourth grade. I remember the slur being called "a faggot," and people making fun of me because of my lisp, and many things because of my, even my ethnic background, being part of the poor neighborhood, and also being gay. The flag to me this month, what it means to me, is that this city is welcoming members of the LGBTQ community. Just like the Blue Lives Matter that sits on public property, that is a symbol for you all about your life when you're out on the field, correct? That flag is a symbol that my life matters when I'm walking downtown, when I'm with my partner, that I get to enjoy myself as a taxpayer in this community. That flag should be with the other flags on the flagpole. In this country, there are members of the LGBT community who continue to be slayed. For example, Dustin Parker was fatally shot in Oklahoma for being a part of the LGBT community. Marilyn Caseras, a transgender Latina, was killed in Brawley, California. The flying of this flag next to our state and country flag is a symbol for people like me to feel seen and heard and know that Fullerton stands against hate. The fact that it is not being flown next to the other flags is showing me disrespect, especially being a member of your district. Now I know what you stand for. The LGBT community has one month out of the year, and we celebrate the advancement of our rights, we mourn those who we have lost, and we reflect about our future. We are the future. I am the future. I'm giving public comment today to let members of the community know, and my LGBT brothers and sisters know, members of the Latino community, members of the API community know, that our voice will not be silenced, and that as a minority, we are welcomed here in Fullerton. And I hope that you choose, again, to fly the flag on the flagpole. And something like misplacing the flag is an excuse. I don't know if it's a budgetary issue, but I'm sure the community would have bought a flag for you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Alvarez, I have one question for you. You're aware that there are a few other cities in Orange County that fly the pride flag. Are you aware how they post that flag? In most every instance that I've seen, it's not on the same flagpole with the US national flag.
Am I a resident of those cities? You are my elected official. I am asking you.
And the flag is prominently displayed over the front door.
And I won't debate, and I won't give you a history lesson, but I will say this. It is a request as a member of District Four that you please consider flying the flag like past years. This is not, see, there is historical precedence. Is there not?
Well, there is. There's also historical precedence that the US flag is to be honored on its own.
Absolutely. But there is historical precedence that this city has flown it, and as a taxpayer here, I expect that.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Venía a hablar por un incidente que me pasó ayer. I came here to speak about an incident that happened to me yesterday. Vivo en el Distrito Cuatro. I live in District Four. Ayer hice una llamada a la policía porque una persona me insultó. I made a call to the police yesterday because a person insulted me. Con problemas raciales. Due to racial problems. Me dijo que me regresara a México. They told me to go back to Mexico. Y que ella entrenaba perros. And that she trained dogs. Y que me podía enseñar inglés para que yo pudiera hablar inglés. And that she could teach me English, so that I could be able to speak English. Este, no sé qué estaba, si estaba drogada o qué era lo que le pasaba por su mente a ella. I don't know what was going on with her, if she was drugged or what was going through her mind. Pero se me arrimó a mi carro, a mi ventana de mi coche porque yo estaba parqueada en mi estacionamiento. But she came right up to the window of my car. I was parked there in the parking lot. Y me di, o sea, me sentí amenazada porque traía una botella de licor y yo tendí mucho miedo porque no, o sea, no entendía por qué ella me estaba agrediendo a mí. And I felt threatened because she came at me with, she had a bottle of liquor, and I felt very afraid. I didn't understand why she was harassing me. Y, o sea, solamente me insultaba que me fuera a México, que yo tenía que hablar inglés. Mi esposo estaba ahí traduciéndome porque él habla un poco más de inglés. And she was just insulting me, telling me to go back to Mexico and that I had to speak English. My husband was there translating for me because he speaks more English. Y ella me dijo que sí tenía residencia para estar en Estados Unidos porque si no hablaba inglés entonces no tenía documentos. She asked me if I had residency to be in the United States because if I didn't speak English, I didn't have my documents. Entonces llamé a la policía, pero los policías no pudieron hacer nada porque no hay nada de leyes para las personas racistas que nos atacan a nosotros sin hacer nada. And I called the police, but the police was not able to do anything because there's no laws for racists that attack us for not doing anything. Y pues mi pregunta es a ustedes, o sea, tienen que matarnos o hacernos algo para que hagan algo por nosotros. My question to you guys, do they have to kill us or do something to us for you guys to do something for us? Es todo, gracias. That is it. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to support my colleagues and friends. We cannot tolerate hate in our city or anywhere for that matter. I'm a Spanish speaker and proud of it. I have three daughters that are Spanish speakers as well, also bilingual. We cannot allow that kind of the hate to be continued. We are hell human. I also want to say that it's an intolerance, don't raise the pride flag in our city. We are accepting of everyone regardless of sexual orientation, and we need to demonstrate that to the LGBTQ+ community considering today is the first day of Pride Month. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juan Espinoza, and I was with my wife last night when all this happened, and I just want to say that there is too much hate against the people like on our community, Latin and Spanish, because sometimes when you're to start something, if they listen to you speaking Spanish, they get upset, they just don't like, and they start questioning you if you have documents, if you have the right to stay here in this country, and things like that. So we really don't feel comfortable. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yo estoy aquí para apoyar a mi compañera. Yo también hablo inglés y digo, hablo poquito inglés, pero no lo hablo fluido.
I'm here to support my friend, and I do speak a little bit of English, but I don't speak it fluently.
Todos tenemos una historia.
We all have a story.
Yo fui víctima de violencia doméstica por muchos años.
I was a victim of domestic violence for many years.
Eso no me permitió aprender.
And that is something that has allowed me to learn.
Ahora que tengo la oportunidad, he aprendido.
Now that I've had the opportunity, I have learned.
Y sí, este, le pediría que por favor viéramos la manera.
And I would like to ask you to please find a way.
De tener algo como para evitar estos ataques contra todos, no importa la raza, color, preferencia sexual.
And I would like for you to find some way to, find a way to avoid these attacks against people no matter what their color or race or sexual preference.
Es todo, gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Alma Chávez.
Good evening, my name is Anna Chavez.
Alma.
Alma. Disculpe, sorry.
Gracias por permitirme estar hoy esta noche aquí.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening.
Traigo dos puntos a su comparación hoy.
I bring two points to consider this evening.
Okay. Otra vez vengo con lo de la luz en la Highland y la Orange Thorpe, y también me gustaría que ustedes escucharan que hace dos semanas en Richmond Park hubo un accidente, un carro se metió hasta el parque cerca de los...
So one thing is the light, the streetlight on Highland and Orange Thorpe, and then also I want you to know that two weeks ago in Richmond Park, there was an accident where a car went into the park.
Okay, perdón. El accidente fue en la Richmond y la Orange Thorpe?
The accident was on Richmond and Orange Thorpe.
Y se metió al Parque de Woodcrest?
And it went into Woodcrest Park.
Y esta vez nos tocó algo muy cercano a nosotros.
And this time, it was something that happened very close to us.
Una de nuestras compañeras de la Asociación de Woodcrest, de las primeras fundadoras, su esposo fue el que fue lastimado. Estuvo una semana en terapia intensiva, y se llevaron los postes que están para proteger. Entonces, ya van varios accidentes de esa índole en esa intersección. Entonces, nos gustaría que se encontrara la manera de proteger a nuestros hijos que juegan en ese parque.
So the accident, it was something that affected us, and one of our fellow workers in the Woodcrest Association, it affected her husband. He was hit, and he had to be in intensive therapy for a week, and it knocked down the posts that are there to protect. And so we want to find a way to be able to prevent this from happening so that our children can be able to enjoy playing in the park.
Y pues otra de los temas es también, pues tenemos que tener algo que nos proteja de las cosas raciales porque lo bonito de nuestra ciudad de Fullerton es la diversidad.
And the other topic is we need to find a way to protect us from racial things because one of the nice things about the city of Fullerton is our diversity.
Y por eso es que tenemos tantos años viviendo aquí por la diversidad y la unión que se tiene entre las comunidades. Por eso nos gustaría que ustedes como miembros del Consilio hicieran algo para ayudarnos. Muchas gracias.
And that's why we've been living here for so many years because of the diversity and the union among various communities, and that's why we would like you guys as a council to do something to help us. Thanks so much.
Buenas noches, ahora voy a hablar en español si me puedes traducir.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm going to speak in Spanish if you could translate for me.
Buenas noches, Mayor Whitaker, y miembros del Consilio de Fullerton, y también a los staff.
Good evening to Mayor Whitaker and the members of the council and also the staff.
Hoy esta noche quiero traer unos puntos a su presencia, a que ustedes nos puedan responder a estas preguntas que tengo.
So this evening, I would like to bring several points before your presence that you would be able to respond to the questions that I have.
Me gustaría que si nos pudieran ayudar, ya sea los que trabajan aquí, ustedes miembros del Consilio, la policía, a traer programas para salud mental.
I would like to ask for help for those of you who work here and the members of the council and the police to be able to bring mental health programs.
Prevención de drogas.
Drug prevention.
Y programas para los jóvenes que están insolados en la casa y que han sido quizás trastornados porque no están haciendo sus actividades normales, y han habido muchos suicidios.
And also programs for the youth that have been shut up in their homes, and many have been affected with mental disorders where there have been quite a few who have been affected by suicide.
El otro punto que quiero que ustedes me pudieran ayudar también es acerca de darnos un resumen acerca del señor de códigos que fue, que lo agarraron para cerrar el dispensario ilegal que está en la Orange Thorpe y la Highland.
And the other point is if you could give a summary regarding the code enforcement person who was in charge of closing the illegal dispensary on Orange Thorpe and Highland?
No hemos visto ningún resumen de cuánto dinero la ciudad ha tenido en multas a ese lugar. Nos gustaría saber cuánto dinero le han multado ese lugar para que no siga, porque hay mucho tráfico día y noche, y estamos nosotros con ese tráfico enfrente del Parque de la Woodcrest, está este y enfrente de los apartamentos.
We would like to know how much money has been fined to that dispensary. We have not had a summary about that, so we would like to know the dollar amount of the fines, and because this dispensary brings a lot of traffic day and night, and it's also, it's close to Woodcrest Park and also to the apartments.
El otro punto es el accidente, como dijo mi compañera, de la Richmond y la Orange Thorpe, acerca del vehículo que venía a Recio y golpeó a nuestro amigo familiar y estuvo en el hospital. Quisiéramos que tuvieran, mandaran a alguien que hiciera unos, digamos, unos datos de los accidentes que han tenido y de cuánto pasan por la calle Recio.
So in regards to the accident that happened that my friend had referred to in Richmond and Orange Thorpe, and we would like to know with regards, well, that vehicle was going fast, and it hit the family friend who was in the hospital. We would like to be able to find out if you could provide some data as to other accidents that have occurred and the speed of the vehicles in that area.
Y por último, yo quiero referirme a lo que las compañeras dicen acerca del peligro racial o de la discriminación racial. Yo he sentido esa discriminación, y gracias por traer esa bandera, pero también me gustaría que pusieran una bandera de pro católicos, de pro-life, de pro Hispanic, de pro Mexican, de pro Chinese, de pro Vietnamese, de pro families. Porque no es justo que nada más una bandera esté dándole tanta atención. So entonces, si vamos a hacer una bandera, por favor, pónganme todas esas banderas, porque todos somos iguales. Son las, nosotros somos, somos equal rights.
So lastly, I would like to make reference to the racial discrimination and danger because of racism. I have felt discrimination, and I would like to ask if the, if one banner is going to be flown, that there would also be a pro Catholic banner, pro-life banner, pro Hispanic, pro Mexican, pro Chinese, pro Vietnamese. So please, if one banner is going to be flown, or one flag rather, will be flown, please include all of the different flags. It's not just for just one flag to be flown, but we are all equal, and we all need to be included.
Muchas gracias. Buenas noches.
Thanks and good evening.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Vengo a representación de unas compañeras debajo de las viviendas.
Vengo a representación de unas compañeras debajo de las viviendas.
I'm coming representing some friends regarding housing.
Okay, en las condiciones de que, en las condiciones de viviendas que estamos sobre la Baker y la Highland.
And in regards to the condition of the housing on Baker and Highland.
Quiero saber si es legal que en un año nos estén subiendo dos aumentos de renta.
I want to know if it's legal for there to be two rent raises in one year.
Traigo las pruebas de que son dos aumentos en un solo año.
I have the proof that there are two rent raises within one year.
Quiero también saber si hay alguna ayuda de renta, de asistencia.
I'd also like to know if there's any kind of rent help or assistance.
Y cuántos fondos hay para, para el alivio de la renta.
And how much funding there is for rent relief.
Y para saber cómo se puede, si queremos, más que nada lo que quiero saber porque no saben, las condiciones en las, en las condiciones que estamos en los apartamentos hay ratas, cucarachas, chinches tenemos en los apartamentos. Pero a mí se nos hace mucho lo que nos están dando aumento de renta, más aparte nos están cobrando lo que es agua y basura. Aumento de renta, agua y basura para nosotros es mucho. Las personas que no han querido venir aquí a hablar con nosotros es por miedo que tengan represarios contra esas personas. Por eso estoy aquí en representación de ellos.
So, I want to know how it is that the rent is being raised and yet the conditions are poor. We have rats, we have cockroaches, we have bedbugs. And I believe, to me, that's a lot that they're raising rent and yet, and we also have to pay water and trash and that it's too much that it's being raised. And other people are not coming here to speak because they're afraid of retaliation. So I'm here in representation of all of those people.
Por esta razón estamos aquí, a ver si hay una forma de que ustedes nos pueden apoyar en esta situación que estamos.
So that's why we're here to see if there's a way that you can support us in this situation that we find ourselves.
Tengo entendido que la señorita Cindy, Cindy Velazquez, la nueva encargada de códigos, ha estado llevando papelitos para que las personas lo llenen.
And my understanding is that Cindy Velazquez, the new code enforcement person, has some forms available for people to fill out.
Y las personas no se han querido llenarlos porque miedo, temor y miedo a que haya represarios contra esas personas.
And the people have not wanted to fill them out because they are afraid, there's fear that there could be retaliation against them.
Porque la persona que es el manager siempre ha tomado represarios contra las personas, les pide, les manda el desalojo luego, luego inmediatamente. Por eso quiero pedirlas de favor a ustedes que nos pueden apoyar con esto, muchas gracias.
Because the person who's the manager, she always takes retaliation against people. She puts an eviction right away. And so that's why I would like to ask the favor that you would support us. Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening, my name is Karina, I live here for over 25 years, you guys already know me. And I'm here because, like my friends were saying, I don't know what happened in this couple of years, but hate is just around the corner. Firsthand that I experienced myself and it's really sad because it comes from people that actually don't do anything. You know, sometimes they think because they have papers or they're, I don't know what they think they are, they can just come and like, you know, disrespect us or say really dumb stuff. You know, sometimes even people that don't have papers do more than people that actually are born here. So unfortunately, they're not educated to learn and to, to, yeah, to just to learn and get to know each other. Because at the end of the day, when we die, we're only gonna be dust. So it doesn't matter what we are, what we believe, you know? And I think one of the things I'm here too is because I was here when you guys passed for the flag to be here at the city. And it's actually sad that I see it on the other side. I mean, if someone else wants to put a different kind of flag, they can come and bring their own people and ask for whatever flag they want. But if already, we, you guys, we have already asked for that. And I mean, how did it disappear? I mean, I'm not rich, but I can grab a bunch of cloth and make one if you guys needed one. So I think we don't need to be divided. Like I said many times here, we need to be united, we need to be together. You, you as a leader, you as our representation, you need to let people know that it's not okay to mistreat other people, even if it's just a flag for you or, I don't know, your beliefs. But we need to be together. And you putting it on the other side, it makes people maybe have the audacity to start again hate. And like I said, hate can be anyone, so please reconsider that, thank you.
Hello, good evening, council, Mayor Whitaker, councilman. To all the public that is here and watching us, Edgar Nunsen, Lieutenant, resident of Fullerton. I'm here tonight because this is what is happening in our neighborhoods. Our neighbors, they've been treated so horribly because they speak Spanish. That's why we came here to counsel, to advocate, to have translation, to have equal rights, to be respected. We just not advocate here for, for the Spanish people, for the Korean community, for the community, community from India, for anyone that come here and want to be represented. I want to be here. This is changes that we're doing on our education system. Because we need to start in our school and that's what we're doing. We are having reforms in school. When we're gonna have equal rights, we're teaching our children to be respectful, to be tolerant. And we're seeing this behavior that is so sad. I have other families, they were so afraid to come tonight and tell you what is going through. We bring this subject to the police department and we know people have the freedom of speech. But what happened when that, that speech, it hurt somebody else. What is become harassment, become hate. Because hate is very powerful and it can hurt not just the persons that are here, they're children. They're traumatized to see how they've been treated. And we see this disguised in so many ways. A flag, the pride flag is, is represent, is represent the fight of so many people to the right to love wherever they want and they have to be respected. I was here when it was raised, you know? We, we rose the flag, it was in 2019. And it was such amazing event that we have here for our community because we are accepting our, our members, our residents. We are Americans, we believe in the Constitution. It is in the Constitution that you have to respect the people's belief to the freedom of who they're gonna love. And what happened with Fullerton, this is not the neighborhood that we're fighting and we're serving during a pandemic. So many of us, we risked our life providing services, helping our neighbors because that is what we're supposed to do as Fullertonians, as the sons or daughters of God. What is happening with our city? I don't recognize this. I've always been so proud to be a Fullertonian, to have my daughter here and I feel safe and I am not feeling safe anymore. Please, I urge all of you, because you represent us, to make something about this. Because this is so hurtful for our communities and we have to have these chambers full of people telling their stories for creating change. And people are so afraid to come and tell you their truth to all of you. Please, we want actions, help us, and we ask for respect. The pride flag, it should be flown with the other flags, thank you.
Good evening, city council and staff. I would, my name is Jensen Hallstrom. I would like to express my deep gratitude for staff and council becoming aware and taking action on the issue of unapproved bike trails on public lands in Fullerton. I would like to give thanks especially to council member Fred Jung for personally visiting some of these sites with me to witness the damage firsthand. And also Alice Loyah and Krista Johnson, who are ensuring that there will be actions taken to remove some of these particular jumps. And I would hope also for the mountain biking community that, you know, this is an issue which unfortunately I feel didn't have to transpire the way that it did. I understand that mountain biking is a very valuable recreational activity in Fullerton because of our hills. And I fully support that activity, just not when it involves the illegal vandalism of public lands. So again, I would just like to thank council and staff for their action on this issue and have a good evening.
Buenas noches, Mayor Whitaker y el resto de miembros del Consilio.
Good evening to Mayor Whitaker and to the rest of the members of the council.
Estoy aquí por varias razones, la primera es acerca de estos dispensarios ilegales.
I'm here for various reasons and the first of those is because of the illegal dispensaries.
Se ha tomado mucho tiempo.
It's taken quite a long time.
Este, quizás, las multas, no sé qué es lo que está pasando, si es muy poca o... Estuve en una junta que el señor Amar tuvo. Parece ser que se toma como de seis a ocho, diez meses, pero esto ya es, espero que traduzcan.
But I don't know if it's because the, perhaps the fines are not enough or what, what the reason is. I was in a meeting with Mr. Amar and they were saying that it could be six to eight or 10 months of the process.
Y queremos saber qué, lo más pronto posible si se puede cerrar. Está en un lugar visible donde está la escuela, el parque.
So we would like to be able to find the quickest way possible for it to close. It's in a visible place, the park is there, the school is.
Otra cosa que quiero mencionar es el, lo del accidente que tuvimos apenas en el parque de ahí de Wulcres.
The other thing I want to mention is regarding the accident that we just had at Woodcrest Park.
Y ver verdad, o sea, qué es lo que se puede hacer porque no es, perdón.
To see what, what can be done because...
No es el primer accidente, ha habido varios.
That's not the first accident, there have been several.
Y respeto a lo de las banderas.
And then with regards to the flags.
Todos somos iguales, todos merecemos respeto.
We are all equal, we all deserve respect.
Pero Fullerton se, para mí se considera una ciudad de familias, verdad, este... Que los niños no podemos inculcarle algo a los niños o... Para qué necesitamos tantas banderas, verdad, todos se respeta, todos somos iguales. Pero sí con la de esta, la que tenemos en Estados Unidos representa a todos, ¿para qué ponemos más banderas?
But Fullerton, it seems to me that it's a city focused on families, but with, how can we be communicating to our children if we have so many flags? If we're all equal and we all should be respected, then I believe the United States flag encompasses all of us.
Es todo, muchas gracias.
That's it, thank you so much.
Buenas noches a los concejales, soy residente de Fullerton.
A little closer to the microphone.
Good evening to the council members, I'm a resident of Fullerton.
Este, quería hacerles una pregunta.
I wanted to ask all of you a question.
Qué es lo que está pasando con el dispensario de la Highland?
What's going on with the dispensary on Highland?
Si ha habido multas, cuántas multas?
If there have been fines, how many fines?
Y cuánto de ese dinero, de esas multas se ha recogido a la ciudad?
And how much of the money from those fines has been collected to the city?
Queremos que en la calle, que es, en la calle de la, de la Orange Thorpe, de la Highland para la Richmond esté más alumbrada y más por el dispensario que tenemos y la licor.
We want the, the street, Orange Thorpe, from Highland to Richmond, to be more lit up, especially because of the dispensary and the liquor store there.
También quisiera apoyar a mis compañeras sobre lo del racismo de discriminación.
I'd also like to support my friends with regards to the racism and the discrimination.
No por ser latinos tenemos que ser discriminados?
We shouldn't be discriminated against for being Latinos.
Y me gustaría que lo consideran, consideraran ustedes en su agenda.
And I would like for you guys to consider that on your agenda.
También quisiera hablar sobre el parque.
I'd also like to speak about the park.
Que pudieran poner otros tipos de stops en el parque.
If you can put another kind of stop, stop sign in the park, may I ask for to clarify?
¿Se refiere a un auto? No, ahí donde se metió el auto, o sea...
Como un barrador.
Ajá, no, es que tienen como unas barreras pero son movibles.
Okay, so I'm asking for some kind of barrier to be placed there. There are barriers there, but they're movable.
Entonces, este, para proteger a los niños porque ahí cerca donde cayó el carro está una como pista de patinaje. Y a esa hora, gracias a Dios, no había muchos, no había niños porque siempre como a las seis de la tarde hay muchos niños en esa, de patinaje.
And near the place where the accident occurred, normally there are children, there's like a track, like a skate park. And normally around six in the afternoon, there's a lot of kids there, but thank God there were not at that time.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Soy Carolina.
I'm Carolina.
También vengo a hablar acerca del accidente.
I'm also here to speak with regards to the accident.
Me gustaría que pudieran, ya el señor Amar dijo que iba a ser como un estudio, verdad, acerca de por qué están pasando los accidentes ahí.
I would like, Mr. Amar already said that there will be a study done in regards to why the accidents are happening there.
Pero realmente sí es necesario antes de llegar a la conclusión de esos accidentes sí es necesario un reforzamiento en los postes.
Before getting to the specifics of the accident, it's necessary to have reinforcement there in the posts?
Yo sé que, sabemos que la ciudad no tiene dinero, pero para mí unas vidas es más valioso.
I know that the city doesn't have money, but for me, lives are more valuable.
Y todas las vidas, no solo las de los niños que juegan en el parque sino que todos. Y es por eso que también me gustaría, yo respeto a todos y tengo, quiero decirlo acá, que tengo familia que son gays y son, yo los quiero mucho.
And all lives are important, not just the lives of the children playing in the park. I do respect everyone and I have family who are gay and I love them very much.
Pero de verdad en mi familia no hay banderas y no necesitamos banderas ni colores ni para querernos y respetarnos los unos a los otros. Yo pienso que en Fullerton igual, como dijo una compañera, yo no soy nacida acá, pero para mí, la bandera de los Estados Unidos para mí representa todo. Ahí estoy yo que no soy nacida acá, ahí, acá, en los Estados Unidos. Eso representa a mis hijos que son nacidos acá, mi primo que es gay, mi sobrina que creo que es lesbiana aunque no me lo ha dicho. Creo que nos necesitamos más banderas, pero ustedes son las que tienen la última palabra siempre.
I believe that we don't need to fly many flags or have different colors. I believe that we can all love and respect each other and that, just like my female friends had mentioned, I believe that with the, the one flag, the United States flag, that that includes all of us including, even though I was not born here, it represents me. And it also, my children who were born here, my cousin who is gay, my niece, I believe she's lesbian even though she hasn't mentioned it. I believe that that flag would, the, the US flag includes everyone. But you guys ultimately have the last word.
Gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you and good evening.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I want to speak about a few things. The, as far as the trails that go around Fullerton, I think there should be a distinction between the mountain biking and the BMX community. I think pretty much any issues that have been talked about are with the BMX bicycle riders. The mountain bikers aren't really the ones jumping their bikes and stuff. I'd also like to speak about the marijuana dispensary up there on Raymond called Serenity. Well, I thought, I looked twice, and it's, the name is actually Serenity at Fullerton, and I'd like to have the, maybe the name changed back, because if it's not operating legally, it shouldn't have the endorsement of the city on their sign. And I'd also like to speak about the flag. I would like to say that I think the American flag does represent all of us, and that would make it a lot more simple, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident, and I'm speaking as a cis hetero dude. How do you lose the flag? Mayor Whitaker, it is clear that when you couldn't stop the pride flag from flying, you separated it. It's so obvious that you're signaling dog whistles to the haters in our community and trying to divide us, but you went a step further. You actually defended your actions by calling the LGBTQQ community a subgroup of American citizenry, sub as in lesser. I can't believe that a mayor of our city would stoop so low as to use words that are meant to dehumanize. Words matter. Privilege is not the absence or the presence of perks and benefits. It's the absence of obstacles and barriers, but I wouldn't be surprised because at an anti-Asian hate rally, you stereotyped Asians and dismissed our struggles. Yes, it's clear that I am of Asian descent, and yes, I experienced a lot of success academically, but my Asian descent is not causation for my academic success. Let me guess, you probably were rewarded when you brought home an A minus. In my house, my reward was being beat because A minuses were minuses and not As. As mayor, you control the agenda, but let me ask you, in the past six months, what have you done except blame our city staff and dismantle our city while stirring up hate? You are neither fit nor worthy of the title, title of mayor. Shame on you. Go Bruins.
Do we have Zoom callers who are seeking to address the council?
We do, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to call upon, apologies if I mispronounce this, Jeff Latour now.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. I want to ensure the chamber can.
Okay, thank you, and my apologies for not being able to get there. I was delayed at work. So, on three minutes, lots of things to say, but let me, let me just start with some broad generalities. Number one, I can't believe that on what was to be a joyous occasion, the first day of Pride Month, that here we are, refighting a battle that was properly and legally settled two years ago, all due to the actions of you, Mayor Whitaker. I have to say that I know from prior votes that Councilmember Silva and Zara are in favor, and I note from the very on-point and insightful remarks from Councilmember Jung that he understands that your actions are clearly separate and unequal, so my remarks will be almost exclusively addressed to you. There's two issues whenever, and I've been in this, this fight for 40 years, 30 of it with, living with HIV and facing all the discrimination that goes with that, the whole package. And I'm telling you that, that your actions are being perceived to a point that, that is just ripping your city apart, and you are supposed to be the mayor and do the opposite of that. The two issues that always are before us is why, why the gay flag, you know, why, why that one and not, not others? And, and the second is what is the significance of it being on the flagpole versus somewhere else? On the first issue, I would say, and I'm not trying to be coy, but, but why the gay flag is because we have been through a long, hard winter, and why we have been through a long, hard winter is primarily from two factors. One is government oppression, the worst kind of oppression, and religious oppression, the second of which we can't do anything about here tonight. But, but years and years and decades and decades of cruel oppression based on government policy, evictions and, and terminations and every inability to serve in the military, you name it, insurance discrimination, the list goes on and on. So the concept of pride is to, to recognize that the oppression has come from a government institution, and that when these young and, and old people from the LGBTQQ community see that flag flying on a city pole right next to the, the United States flag and the, the state of California flag, and sometimes the city flag, it is a symbol that they are no longer to be perceived as the enemy, as lesser than, as a, a victim of, of their own government. And, and if you.
And that's your three minutes.
I'm sorry? That's, that's three minutes?
Yes, it is.
Oh, my Lord. All right, sorry about that, but, but shame on you for unilaterally making that, that decision after it's already been decided. Shame on you.
Pete Cruz? Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and council. I know that many of the folks who have come up to speak about the pride flag are speaking on a moral argument against a separate but equal display of the flag. But I want to talk more on the economic case, because that may appeal to certain members of the council in particular. The economic case of avoiding stigma, discrimination, and de facto segregation is, which is embodied by how the flag is displayed, causes cities to lose financial support, whether it's through a brain drain of diverse talent or through new business formations. The city of Fullerton is also going to deal with that lack of competitiveness as new businesses would like to form in the city against other cities who are essentially advancing in, quote, "everyone is welcome ethos." So those business habits would assist the city much better if they simply just integrated the flag the way the, the community has asked for, including its allies. Even homophobic and transphobic business owners in Fullerton, who donated to candidates that are sitting on the council, understand that their position is limited once customers discover their true intent. If a customer realizes that the owner of a business is homophobic or transphobic or discriminatory in any manner, they'll take their business elsewhere. More and more, you see that on Yelp reviews, you see that on, you see that in terms of public comments that are being displayed today in other city council meetings. What this represents is inequality, inequality that's being represented by how the flag is placed at the city hall. It hurts the profitability of Fullerton's businesses and weakens the competitiveness of Fullerton's less discriminatory neighbors and businesses through economic development, which is one of the goals that are pursued by the city council members themselves. If there is one reason to unify the city and the city council, it would be to focus their aim at zero discrimination policies for a robust local Fullerton economy to allow those talented individuals to stay in Fullerton and to shop in Fullerton. Thank you for your time.
Tanya McRory?
Good evening, council. My name's Tanya McRory. I did not want to get so personal tonight, but I feel that it's important for context. I have dated women in my twenties, and now I'm married to a man. I was an alcoholic for many years, and now I'm a sober woman in a 12-step community. I was a working artist, and now I'm a businesswoman, and I don't need a flag to show me or to tell me that I am accepted in this country. I don't need a flag to tell me that I belong to this amazing country, whoever I am, as I change and grow. Flying separate flags is yet one more attempt to divide us rather than unite us. Why can't people see that the power is in the people, which means all the people, all the groups, all the nationalities, gender, sexual identity? We are all Americans, and the more we subdivide, the weaker we become. What group is next to demand a flag in order to be recognized? Who gets to decide that? The American flag represents us all. That's the miracle of this country. Do not be fooled. Do not think that if they put a gay flag up or a Black Lives Matter in the window of their business, that they're paying a living wage. If you want true equality, let's fight for it where it matters, but the American flag represents all of us, and don't let anyone ever take that away from you. Thank you so much.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers.
Thank you. We will bring the item to the council and staff, and there were a number of items that were brought up, Mr. Acting City Manager, and if you care to address any of those or have any members of staff address those, this would be the time.
Kelly, do you have any issues that you want to handle?
Thank you. Just regarding the rent increases, I recommend everybody call Fair Housing Foundation at 800-446-3247 if you have any questions. There is a cap that can be charged each year, which is 5% plus CPI, so this year it was eight and a half percent. Regarding money for rent assistance, there is still money. Please call Jessica at 714-738-6544. Regarding the cannabis shop on Highland, the property owner is now assisting staff and has issued the eviction order, and if he doesn't evict them, we have also issued our final notice, and we will be going to a public nuisance hearing. Over 4,000 in fines have been levied so far.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Kelly, on that eight and a half percent increase, yeah, so they could raise it twice in the same year, as long as it's within that eight and a half percent, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but if it adds up to, say, nine, then they can, all right.
Thank you. That answered another question. Appreciate it.
Yeah, should we translate that one?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
May I have those phone numbers once more, just to make sure I got those right? Okay. Okay. Primeramente, en cuanto a los aumentos en la renta, se recomienda que se puede llamar, se llama Fair Housing, y el número telefónico es 800-446-3247. Y el estándar es que se puede subir 5% más CPI, es un total de 8% y medio. Sí se puede subir dos veces en el año con tal que se quede dentro de esa cifra de 8% y medio. También en cuanto a asistencia de la renta, o ayuda con la renta, se puede llamar a Jessica. El número de ella es 714-738-6544. It's 6544 for Jessica? Okay. And the 4,000 was the... Okay. Y la cantidad de multas para el dispensario de cannabis es cuatro mil dólares. Okay. Was there anything else? Thank you. Está siendo desalojado el propietario del dispensario. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, there was one other issue that was brought up, and I was at an event at Woodcrest Park, where many of the attendees showed me the photos of the vehicle that had careened off. It was eastbound on Orange Thorpe at a high rate of speed and careened off into the park. And we don't have our traffic engineer here this evening, but they expressed many concerns about having a study of that particular area. During this pandemic, during this lockdown, there have been so many people intoxicated or otherwise impaired who have had some pretty egregious accidents. I know the Big Five Sporting Goods store had a car plow through it. There, there have been many off Orange Thorpe, even the length of Orange Thorpe where that's occurred. So a study of that area is something that I would very much recommend, and perhaps consideration of a barrier at the corner out there.
Our Public Works Director did let me know that she's taking a look at that right now.
Great, thank you. So that was in addressing some of that as well. So if I bring the conversation to the council now, I would start with Councilmember Jung.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jung, can she just translate that for them about the barrier?
Oh, yes, please, please.
If you would.
Thank you, Councilmember Silva. Okay. En cuanto al parque Woodcrest, sí, dijo el alcalde, el alcalde Whitaker, estaba asistiendo un evento en cuanto, donde se habló acerca del accidente, donde el carro estaba viajando a alta velocidad, yendo hacia el este en el Orange Thorpe, y se arrimó y fue al parque, y sí, hay muchas preocupaciones de que debe de haber un estudio. Durante, durante la pandemia en especial, hay mucha gente que han dado, que han estado intoxicados o con algo, un impedimento afectándoles de manera que hay más accidentes. Incluso hubo un accidente donde un carro chocó con la tienda Big Five recientemente. Y sobre la Orange Thorpe, hay varios accidentes, entonces yo recomiendo de que debe de haber un estudio, y se debe de poner una barrera mejor. And in regards to the barrier, just may I ask for repetition? What did you specifically mention about the barrier?
An effective barrier that might prevent a wayward vehicle from crashing into the park, into the playground equipment, endangering children in particular.
De que debe de haber una barrera efectiva, eficaz, que puede prevenir que un vehículo pueda chocar o entrar al parque especialmente en el área de juegos y para poder proteger a los niños en especial.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council. I wanted to thank our president for signing into law the COVID-19 Hate Crimes Act, which responds to the alarming growth of hate crimes against Asian-Americans during this pandemic. It addresses injustice and signals that we have much work ahead to aspire to be a better America. I'm also pleased to report that over 17 million Californians have been fully vaccinated. I want to thank our state senator Josh Newman and state assemblywoman Sharon Quirk-Silva for funding those efforts. I'm also saddened to report that those numbers are only half our eligible population, which is why the governor recently introduced Vax For the Win, a $116 million incentive program to encourage people to get vaccinated, $50 prepaid cards for anyone getting vaccinated for the first time, and over $16 million for 40 winners who already have been vaccinated. So please get your COVID shot and get your 50 bucks. So please get your COVID shot and get your 50 bucks. June 6th is National Cancer Survivors' Day. It's important to celebrate all the members of our community that have fought and continue to fight this dreadful disease. 9.5 million people die from cancer each year, over 600,000 in this country alone. By comparison, COVID-19 killed nearly 600,000 Americans, and we locked the entire country down and battled it with all the resolve and monetary commitment we could muster as a nation. I mention all of this because in the summer of 2014, my father was diagnosed with stage IV stomach cancer. Routine colon exam found a golf ball-sized tumor in his stomach. The survival rate for all stomach cancers barely north of 30%. Five-year survival rate for stage IV barely cracks five. He couldn't manage the strength to even bear a single round of chemo. Cutting over 90% of a person's stomach is probable death sentence for a person of his advanced age. Now he's approaching a seven-year anniversary. My father is out of hospice care, gaining weight, walking gingerly once more. He recently attended his granddaughter's Sunny Hills High School graduation. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of his wonderful caregivers and the amazing medical staff that saved his life. It takes incredible will to battle this terrible disease, and I want to acknowledge all of those in our community who have survived cancer and who continue to courageously battle it. Lastly, sir, June is Pride Month. It's important for us to all appreciate that our LGBTQ community want equal rights that are afforded all Americans. They are not asking for special rights. Like all marginalized communities, our LGBTQ community faces discrimination daily. State measures targeting transgender people in this country are currently working their way through many legislative bodies. And while wealthy ex-Olympian reality stars may garner much of the attention on this issue, perhaps it would benefit us all to see beyond the pomp and circumstance. And remember, these are our neighbors and our community, and we should afford them the same respect as we demand for ourselves. There may be some who are more self-interested in virtue signaling and self-professing wokeness, that only hindering progress and giving ammunition to our bigots in the community. I recall James Baldwin's belief that one of the reasons people cling to their hate so stubbornly is because they sense once the hate is gone, they'll be forced to deal with pain. Symbols matter, sir. They serve as reminders to us all. If they did not, every politician, including our President, would not wear an American flag on their lapel. How symbols are received are even more and matter more. But have faith, Fullerton, love will win. That said, I would move to place the flag. That's flying now, the pride flag on the flagpole, Mr. Mayor, where it was originally placed two years ago. We should all support and aspire to be a better America. And finally, we live in a twilight world, sir. There are no friends at dusk. Thank you.
Councilmember Zahra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first say that for folks who are experiencing any hate crimes or hate incidences, that they should report them to our police, because it is important to report these. Whether the police can take action or not, that's another story. But they, you know, I applaud the courage of the couple who came up and spoke. And there is, you can also report hate crimes to the Orange County Human Relations Commission. I think that is an important step to take as well. I believe if we don't have a link for that on our website, the city website, I believe we should have a link there to allow people, the ability to report these incidences. I hope that our police would be able to look into this incident a little bit closer to see if a crime in fact has been committed. And yes, it is Pride Month, and it is a personal day for me. And of course, it is a celebration of diversity, a time to reflect upon the struggles of our LGBT community. Decades of persecution, anti-LGBTQ laws, imprisonments, cruel punishments, forced conversion, rape, killings, stigma of disease, shaming by our own families and communities, work discrimination, and hateful acts of violence. Our LGBTQ community was forced into hiding and into the shadows. It wasn't until that New York day on June 29th, 1969, when the LGBT community stood up and said, "Enough is enough. We are visible. We are human. We demand equality." Those were the Stonewall riots that started the long journey in America for our civil rights. The pride flag became that symbol of our coming out, of our visibility, and of hope for a better future. But then it became so much more. As we progressed, many nations, US states, cities, and even some houses of worship throughout the world started raising it to celebrate its diverse communities. It transcended culture and boundaries, becoming a symbol of diversity and brought hope wherever it flew. In 2019, I had the honor of raising the pride flag in Fullerton for the first time. There was one moment I'll never forget. A mom and her young teen, who joined many others that day in celebration. She was in tears of joy, but when I looked at that child's face, I saw a big old smile. That was hope. And as Harvey Milk once said, "You gotta give 'em hope." While much has been gained, discrimination, hate crimes, and yes, even killings, have not stopped. Those who seek to demean, discriminate, spread division, and hate are still amongst us, often using any excuse to derail and diminish the progress we've made, even with a simple gesture of hope like a flag. We have more protections here in California, but it's much worse in other places. We can't become complacent nor take anything for granted. We must keep fighting for a better future for our younger generation, so they may never experience what our generation and those courageous souls before us went through. On the issue of displaying our pride flag this year, I want to thank those generous community members who sent flags into City Hall. But now, as Councilmember Jung conveyed, let's send our younger generation a renewed message of hope. Let us restore the flag to its intended place, as per last council direction. For anybody who had watched the council meeting, that council had an intended place. Let us restore that hope so we can truly celebrate our diversity and start working towards a future that we can all build together. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I too would like to echo my request to put the flag up at the flagpole where we... My recollection was we said it would be there, put on there. There was no, it wasn't vague. It was like on the flagpole. So, I mean, the council decided that. We, the council up here at that time, said that's where it's going to go. So unless, I guess, the new council decides otherwise, we should put a bag on the flagpole. And then with that, just, I know Mr. Jung mentioned June 6th. That's Cancer Day, was it, Mr. Jung?
Cancer Survival.
Cancer Survival. Well, June 6th, also an important day here in Fullerton, because we have a vaccine clinic, and we're talking about vaccination. And this clinic would be down at Topaz Elementary, the northeast part of Fullerton. So if you have not gotten your vaccination or, and can't find a place, you can go there. You can walk up and get the vaccination. Or you can call this number, and I'll repeat it a couple of times, 9714-924-4186. And I believe this information is on our current website. And you can call this number from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, 714-924-4186. And it's at Topaz Elementary, 3232 Topaz Lane. And again, that's up there northeast side of Fullerton. So if you haven't got one and need to get one, please, attend. And I do want to thank our fire department, the Solidarity Foundation out in that area, and Supervisor Shafie's office, and the local group there at that neighborhood for getting together and organizing this clinic. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll pass it to you.
Certainly. Thank you. Well, it's clear that there are the votes on this dais to place the flag back on the primary flagpole. I do call your attention to the fact that the resolution at that time said merely that the flag needed to be displayed annually at City Hall. It was not specific in terms of the location. You know, there's an interesting thing that happens in local government, which is, it's called squeaky wheel theory. And squeaky wheel theory is often what we deal with and what we try to make decisions as to whose needs may be paramount and whose needs may be secondary or tertiary or just maybe not that important at all. Because so often, our actions, our resources, our decisions wind up benefiting one group to the detriment of others. And squeaky wheel theory can work. It can work very well, especially when someone disagrees with you that you refer to them as bigoted or racist or hateful. I think that very often, whenever someone uses symbolism or a particular object as a wedge, as a way of defining themselves separate from the public, that they are actually working at cross purposes with being included and being part of a whole, being part of public. And so, you know, against my better judgment, I know that there are very many people who feel very strongly about American history as well. June 6th, which has been brought up a couple of times already, happens to be D-Day. It's the anniversary of the D-Day invasion, the largest amphibious invasion in mankind's history, the liberation of Europe. Our country was credited with providing so many in countries who had been dominated by the tyranny of the Axis to be able to free themselves again, to be able to self-govern, to be able to find freedom. Our flag, I'm not saying at all that our flag is diminished by being paired with other flags, but to declare an equivalence between those flags, I think, is maybe counterproductive and not a good idea. It was brought up this evening that there are so many different symbols and so many different worthy groups where these can be subject to squeaky wheel theory, and unfortunately, again, we're going to have to be the arbiter of these things. I guess anyone who is convicted of a crime could claim that the jury was guilty of a hate crime as well, or that some other reason other than the fact of their own actions might be responsible for that. You know, it is fairly popular nowadays to try to cancel American history, to look down at and sneer at patriotism, and to try to look at our flag as being just another object and not something that should be enshrined and respected and appreciated for that. I did a little bit of research on this. I found that the handful of cities in Orange County that fly the pride flag, they fly it on separate poles. They don't fly it on the same flagpole with our nation's flag. You know, all these decisions can be made. What we're really talking about tonight, the argument tonight, is not whether or not that flag is being displayed prominently. In fact, it occupies the front door of this building. It's the most visible thing as you're traveling east or west on Commonwealth, and if you're in front of the building. Far and away, that pride flag occupies a very preferential location currently. So again, if this council wishes to move in this direction, I do know there is a very large silent majority, which has been shouted down, called names, and told that if there is a disagreement, that you must be a horrible person. Nothing is further from the truth. I know, Mr. Silva, you've known me for many years. Have you seen any bigoted activity or discrimination from me?
I have not seen it, but I will make a comment that during our Asian hate rally, there was that incident where you were accused of stereotyping.
I commended the Asian-American community for being excellent scholastically and helping to raise the level of Fullerton schools.
Yeah.
If that's an insult.
Well, it's not. But I'm saying that was taken as ad, and it could be, and this is where it gets into the nuances, that unless you're on that side, you don't realize the looks, the sense, the feel that you get when someone is making you out different. And I think, and it's hard to explain, but if you're a minority, you get looks, you get spoken at, you get treated just slightly different, where you can sense it, but not the other person that's next to you can sense it.
Oh, I think I can feel that very much right now.
Yeah. And I think that that happens sometimes, and I think, and that's where we, when we've come here before with, you know, the Asian community about Asian hate, and I applaud them, and I'm also thinking, well, there is this Latino brown hate, there's the black hate, there's LGBT hate. And I think, it's just that little sense that sometimes, you don't, some people don't really get it until you've been in that place. But aside from that, I've never seen you act or take actions to discriminate the wrong way.
I get along with all people, all races. It's all about respect, and it's about leading with respect.
Yeah.
And I believe in doing that. I'm feeling very disrespected in terms of trying to defend the American flag, the patriotic nature, members of our military, and having it be described multiple times that there's some ulterior motive, something that's driving this.
No, no.
It's very hard to know what is in someone's heart. I have made appointees to commissions here that certainly qualify in every one of these categories, right?
Yeah. No, you have. And to the point of the flag, I'm a naturalized citizen. The flag means everything to me, and I can appreciate what it has allowed me to do and what those members who fought, we have one right here, Tony Pack, who allowed us, and I'll say, Mr. Zahra, Mr. Jung, and Mr. Silva here, to be up here, and I applaud his effort, and I respect the flag, and I applaud the resonance. But I think he fought so that we all could have equity. And I think we're not trying to cancel culture, but we're trying to expand the culture so we can all see there's different aspects of it. We see it from one view, but let's broaden that view so we see the importance of every society, every group. And so, I don't necessarily think we want to cancel it, but we want to expand on it, learn from it, and be able to learn it, and tolerate and respect each other once we get to know each other. And I think that's what's been missing a little bit, and especially this last few years. We haven't been able to sit down, have a coffee, and learn about each other, and we've been reacting. I've said enough, but...
Well, using wedge issues and partisan politics and other ways of trying to define and accentuate differences is no path to unity.
No, but we want to use them.
Unity is really what our national flag stands for. It does represent all of us. And subgroup is a problem, to say subgroup. Any fraction of any whole is a subpart of that whole. There's nothing negative about that whatsoever. I do want to say one thing. I do apologize or feel sorry I wasn't responsible for it, but when that flag, the flag that was stored, was attempted to be located by our council assistant, it wasn't there. It wasn't in its place. The reporter who called, it was Friday, it was late Friday before the weekend, and the reporter who called me talked about that and said, "Well, that was suspicious that the flag wasn't there." And I said, "Well, I suspect so, but I guess I'm not that surprised. We've been in a lockdown. We've had the pandemic. We've had a lot of turnover. There have been a lot of changes in the city through the year." And I just made the lightest little thing about saying, you know, that's the thing about rainbows, they're ephemeral. Sometimes you look for them, and they aren't there. But that's in no way a put-down. That's no way trying to make light of the fact. I did appreciate and I thanked those who donated the flags. I posted the flag in a prominent position. Now, if this council wants to override me on it, it certainly is your prerogative. But what I'd like to say is very much, if you're asking for respect, Mr. Zahra, if you're asking for respect, respect is earned. It's not demanded. You can't be a bully, and you can't hit people over the head and say, "You must respect me." That's the part that really rankles me on this, is the idea that people aren't earning respect, they are just demanding it, just as a matter of course.
Yeah. Well, on the flag issue...
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
I know that, again, what I said earlier, it was my understanding from 2019 that we had decided to put it on the post. And maybe it wasn't in there, but that was the understanding.
Oh, it wasn't in there.
Yeah. And again...
You know, language does dictate what we do.
Right, right. No, and I agree with you. But again, I was under the assumption and thing that we were going to put it there, because that's the only place we have to put our flags. I mean, as far as I knew, until I realized we had a pole there, and...
Look, when someone stakes out a more extreme position... Look, when someone stakes out a more extreme position, then let's just play this out then, that's fine. And, Mr. Zara, you had something to?
Yeah, since I was referenced, Mr. Mayor, I recall earlier your comments about not personalizing this, and yet here you are, personalizing it about me for some reason, I don't know. I was very respectful in my comments, and this is my time to share my opinion, and I don't think I even mentioned you in my comments.
You have cast aspersions on me throughout this completely.
If I may finish, if I may finish. And, but the issue really started by a unilateral action by yourself, Mr. Mayor. I did not recall a council discussion on this where things changed. This was an issue that was debated two years ago and was settled. There was council direction, the placing of it was even discussed. The reason it was on the same pole is because we didn't want to install another pole. Other cities that have separate poles, they were already installed, so there was a cost issue as well. And the reason it didn't find itself, or why it didn't find, this direction didn't find itself into the resolution itself is maybe an error on our part for not noticing that it wasn't in there. But clearly, if you watch the council meeting from last time, this particular issue was discussed as far as the placement is concerned. However, Mr. Mayor, you took unilateral, you know, without a discussion with our council, without consulting with us, and you made this determination yourself.
To the letter of the resolution, yes.
Right, right, but it would have been really, I think, appropriate if it was brought back, or at least a broader discussion was made on it. However, so the issue was not brought by any one of us, it was brought by you, Mr. Mayor.
And we will get the opportunity to discuss it, and I just submit that part of what we do up here, too, is compromise. And you've been completely uncompromising on this issue, and so we'll get an opportunity, we'll get an opportunity to talk about it.
And, Mr. Mayor, just on that clarification about the flag, so.
Sure.
Do we need to take formal action, or can we just move it tomorrow, City Attorney?
Technically, the city manager would have the ability to post the flag if he felt he had appropriate direction. Legally, the council appears to be divided with respect to that legal direction. You can do one of two things, in my opinion. One, you could set a special council meeting to formally direct the city manager to post that flag if you felt it's necessary, or if the mayor believes that it's unnecessary and withdraws his objection, the city manager could proceed to post the flag. Otherwise, there'd have to be a special meeting called where a formal vote would take place to direct the manager to post the flag.
Or agendize at a regular meeting.
Well, yeah, that's another possibility, just that we're getting towards the end of the one-month period is, would be my consideration there, is that wait two more weeks, we're past the posting period.
So, I guess going forward, Mr. Mayor, would you be in agreement to allowing the city manager to move the flag without having to go through another meeting, or would you be willing to have a special meeting?
Well, it's clear that you have the power on this, and that I think, again, in a misguided way, you're overplaying your hand, but if you wish to do that, certainly, we'll add that to the flag pole, the main flag pole. There are two other issues with the flag pole, too, which I wanted to bring up. One is even the POW MIA flag probably should not be flying on that flag pole, that it should be strictly the US flag and perhaps the California flag. Second thing is that flag is flying at night out here in the darkness, it's not illuminated. It's very important that we do observe flag etiquette. I've mentioned this to staff, and I think maybe some corrective action is happening on that, but that needs to occur.
Yeah, let me respond if I can, regarding what other flags fly on the pole, that's a council direction. If you want to agendize it, what's, which flags will fly, with the American flag, that's up to you. There is specific flag protocol, and as I recall, American flag is supposed to be lit at night if it's refloated at night.
And so, in other words, we should be, tonight, it should be down because it's not illuminated.
Right.
So.
It always has been that case. So, what I'm suggesting is that we haven't been respecting the national flag, and I don't want to see it degraded in any way, if that's possible.
So, and you said we were addressing the illumination so we can have the flag at night?
Or remove the flag.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
For brevity's sake, I think the city manager's got the message, I'm sure he can address this.
Well, I would just say, in that case, we should, are we going to remove that flag tonight because it's not illuminated? I would say we should, because I am with you. I've been trying to put a flag in my house, but I don't because I get lazy taking it down at night because I don't have a light on it, but so I would agree with you in that sense, I think we need.
But let's confirm exactly what the rules are, we'll act accordingly.
It's gone on for a while without being corrected.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd just may add to a little comment on the MOW flag, I believe, from discussions at the last meeting, that was brought up, and it seems that it would fly below the US flag, so I would clarify that as far as state laws and so on, I think the statute on this, so just for clarification.
Yeah, I'm only relating what I've heard from military experts for the most part. All right, so with that, then, we will move to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did have an item tonight for appointments, and I think because of time constraints, I don't know that we're ready for that. What do you think, Councilmember Jung? We haven't really interviewed all the candidates, is that correct?
Yes, that was all of the, I contacted everyone who submitted an application, those are ones that responded for interviews.
Okay, but only on that particular day, right?
On any day, so that was, everyone who responded that wanted an interview was interviewed.
Okay, well, Councilmember Jung, it's still, I think, would be best if we had a full council, we don't have the Mayor Pro Tem with us tonight.
Agreed, sir, so I'd be, I'd motion to table the item until he returns or for the next.
By order of the chair, we can do that, chair's orders.
Okay, we'll do that.
June 15th?
Yes, thank you. And with that, we are at our consent calendar. I haven't heard any items pulled at this stage, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd move the consent calendar, sir.
I'd second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Jung, seconded by Councilmember Zara, and.
And, Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to say to the gentlemen out there here for the Korean War Memorial, this is it, right after this, it's final. So, we thank you for your effort, time and effort and generosity and your commitment to honoring our fallen heroes. Thank you.
I could even permit a brief statement on this, if someone wants to make a very brief statement.
Would you like to vote? Can you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah, to the microphone.
And did you want to vote on the motion while he is coming to the microphone before we forget?
Yes, certainly.
And we have a motion from Councilmember Jung and a second from Councilmember Zara on all of the consent calendar items, and I'll do roll call vote, if that's okay. Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem is not present.
Thank you. So, I, we really appreciate the support from the city and all the city staff's been great, especially Park and Recreation, and we have President Ro and our advisor, Suzy Kang, and the guy who handed all the money is Mr. Ahn over there, and Tony Pack, and myself as Secretary General. We're truly looking forward to around September 28th for the dedication of the Korean War Memorial in Fullerton, that's going to have an entire 36,592 American soldiers who gave their all during the three years and one month Korean War in Korea. Korea is what it is today because of their sacrifice, and we want to really memorialize their names by inscribing all of their names in five-star figure right above the dock pond. And we are looking forward to good results of the plan check by the engineering, and also the construction agreement has been signed between the mayor and President Ro, and we are looking forward to getting on the way. And truly appreciate this historic construction of the Korean War Memorial, and it's getting great attention even from the South Korea, as evidenced by their support, the government's support of $237,000 toward around million-dollar project. And anybody else want to say anything? Okay, thank you so much. And if we can have just a photo of a council and our team so we can publicize this in the Korean newspaper, that will be tremendous support.
We could use a leg stretch here, anyway, let's do it. And we have Ms. Chang here to present item number seven, the Fiscal Year 2122 Annual Operating Budget, Schedule of Fees and Annual Appropriations Limit. Ms. Chang.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In this evening's presentation, staff are requesting approval and adoption of the Fiscal Year 2122 Proposed Budget, Schedule of Fees and Charges, and Appropriations Limit. Tonight, Stephen Alvalos, Budget Analyst, will present an overview of the citywide or all-funds budget, also an overview of the general funds budget, requested changes to the schedule of fees and charges, and an overview of the mandated appropriations limit. I will follow with future city council consideration and the recommended actions. The Fiscal Year 2122 All-City Funds, and specifically the General Fund Budget Development, began in early 2021 with federal and state mandated COVID-19 restrictions still in effect. As part of budget development, a slow and gradual reopening at the beginning of Fiscal Year 2122 was estimated with full reopening mid-Fiscal Year. As such, certain current Fiscal Year 2021 reduced programming levels were factored into the proposed Fiscal Year 2122 budget. Many of these curtailed activities and the corresponding budget requests have not been included in the current proposed Fiscal Year 2122 budget. As restrictions continue to lift, City Council may direct the acting city manager to bring forth programming and service-level options along with shifting budget prioritization for direction to staff during the upcoming fiscal year. At this time, I'll hand the presentation over to Stephen Alvalos to present an overview of the Fiscal Year 2122 All-Funds Operating Budget.
Thank you, Alice. On these next few slides, we will provide you an overview of the Fiscal Year 2122 Proposed Budget for all city funds, including the city's enterprise funds, such as the water and sewer funds, its special revenue funds, such as gas tax and Measure M, its capital projects budget, or better known as the CIP, and the general fund, which is the city's chief operating fund for core city services provided to the community. On this first slide, the proposed all-funds revenue budget across all major city funds is estimated at $211.5 million for Fiscal Year 2122. As you can see from the charts, the general fund proposed revenue budget totals $109 million and makes up approximately 48% of all total revenue citywide. The general fund will be looked at more closely later, but property tax, sales tax, and charges for services make up the primary general fund revenue base. The city's major enterprise fund, the water fund, accounts for 23% of the total all-funds revenue budget at $49 million. Special revenue funds, such as gas tax, county Measure M, and all other grant revenues make up 17% of the city's revenue base at $35 million. These revenues primarily support the city CIP program. On this next slide, the proposed all-funds expenditure budget across all major city funds totals $214.2 million. The all-funds budget reflects an increase of $300,000 from the all-funds budget presented at both study sessions, and this is due to adjustments to its capital projects budget. The proposed budget also includes budget enhancements for city initiatives and planned programming for Fiscal Year 2122. As the general fund is the city's chief operating fund, this makes up 52% of the citywide budget and totals $110.9 million. The water fund totals $32.8 million in its operating budget and makes up approximately 15% of the citywide budget for Fiscal Year 2122. A large portion of water revenues, about $10 million, goes towards and supports the city's water-related projects in the CIP program and budget. The Fiscal Year 2122 CIP, or capital projects budget, totals $26.8 million and is primarily supported by special revenue funds, such as gas tax, SB1, or Measure M, for its street infrastructure and street improvement projects, and by the city's enterprise funds for its water and sewer infrastructure improvements. Overall, you will see a $2.7 million operating deficit across all city funds for Fiscal Year 2122. However, this is largely due to the general fund's projected operating deficit, which we'll discuss in detail more later. The majority of all our other funds are structurally balanced for Fiscal Year 2122. On these next few slides, we will now present an overview of the city's general fund budget for Fiscal Year 2122. As mentioned earlier, the general fund is the city's chief operating fund that supports your traditional municipal services, such as public safety, public works and maintenance services, economic development, and parks and recreation, and library community services. On this first slide, general fund revenues are projected to total $109 million for Fiscal Year 2122. The city's major revenues are property tax and sales tax, and together make up over 70% of the general fund revenue budget. Property tax is the city's largest revenue, at 49% of all general fund revenues, and is projected to total $48.9 million in Fiscal Year 2122, and this revenue continues to grow steadily in light of the current pandemic and economic downturn. For Fiscal Year 2122, property taxes are anticipated to increase by 3%, in line with current and historic growth trends. Sales tax is the city's second-largest revenue and has been a revenue that has been adversely impacted by COVID-19. However, for Fiscal Year 2122, sales tax is projected to come in at $23.6 million. This is an increase of $2.3 million from Fiscal Year 2021, and are projected to return to Fiscal Year 1819 similar sales tax levels. TOT taxes, or hotel taxes, continue to be heavily. TOT taxes, or hotel taxes, continue to be heavily impacted by the pandemic and will likely see a decrease of 1.2 million and total 1.3 million for fiscal year 2122. Parks and recreation and library revenues are other revenues that are impacted by the pandemic and will once again be down for fiscal year 2122. All other revenues, such as charges for services, which are largely development-related user fees and licenses and permits, all, all of which are expected to remain steady in fiscal year 2122. New short-term rental and sidewalk vendor permit fees approved in fiscal year 2021 should assist the general fund, but these revenue from these programs have been conservatively estimated for fiscal year 2122. On this next slide, we present the first chart of the city's general fund expenditure budget, which will total 110.9 million dollars in fiscal year 2122. As noted earlier, the general fund expenditure budget does, does include planned budget enhancements for fiscal year 2122 and does not include any vacancy savings or any other budget balancing measures. The city of Fulton is a full-service city with in-house public safety, our police and fire departments, in addition to all other full-service departments. As such, the city's budget is primarily comprised of salaries and benefits, which reflect approximately 70% of the total general fund expenditure budget. For fiscal year 2122, this totals 77.1 million dollars. A large portion of our salary and benefits budget comprises of CalPERS retirement costs, which total 25.4 million dollars in fiscal year 2122 and makes up approximately 23% of the total general fund budget. For fiscal year 2122, PERS costs will increase by 3.2 million, which is largely due to increases to the city's unfunded actuarial liability, or better known as its UAL obligations. Operations and maintenance make up 16% of the total general fund budget. The city's internal service allocations make up the remaining 14% of the general fund budget. The internal service funds are funds that support internal citywide services that benefit the whole organization. This includes the city's self-insured liability insurance and workers' compensation programs, our vehicle replacement fund, and information technology fund, to name a few. These funds are supported by cost allocations to all departments. This next chart summarizes the fiscal year 2122 general fund budget by department. The city has 10 operating departments, from your general government supporting departments, such as administration, human resources, and finance, to public safety with police and fire, to community and economic development and public works departments, and to the city's human and leisure services departments with library and parks and recreation. As you can see from the charts, public, public safety encompasses over 70% of the general fund budget and best illustrates the effect of being a primary full-service city. Public Works is another large department for the city, but only represents 7% of the general fund, as this department is also responsible for city utilities, such as water, sewer, and refuse. The cost of other public work services for infrastructure improvements are offset by other special revenue funds, such as gas taxes and various other grant programs. The remaining departments combined for 20% of the general fund. When looking at revenues against expenditures together, there is a projected $10 million operating deficit in the general fund for fiscal year 2122 without the use of any vacancy savings or budget balancing measures. Per city council direction from the last study session, the general fund projected operating deficit is being recommended to be closed with 3.8 million dollars in vacancy savings and the remaining with the use of contingency reserves. Further, the city council provided the acting city manager direction to identify 2% to 5% in additional reductions to be submitted for future city council consideration during the new fiscal year. These both will be discussed more later in the presentation. On this next slide, we highlight the major budget changes or budget highlights for fiscal year 2122. As mentioned earlier, the city's PERS retirement costs will increase by 3.2 million dollars in fiscal year 2122. Again, this is due to increases to the city's unfunded actuarial liability as, as the UAL continues to increase in accordance to its projected ramp-up schedule in its current 30-year amortization schedule. Fiscal year 2122 also includes budget enhancements of $180,000 for new city initiatives and planned new programs. In fiscal year 2020, 2122, there is a new emergency operations program to coordinate the city's emergency management and response efforts to mitigate and respond to emergencies. There is also a new economic development program. As this, as the city continues its economic development efforts to create new and support existing business activities here in the city, and also foster economic growth and bolster the local city economy. The budget also includes illegal cannabis enforcement, among other essential services the city continues to offer the community. In fiscal year 2122, the general fund's contributions to its internal service funds, primarily to the liability insurance, vehicle replacement, and informational technology, internal service funds are also proposed to be increased by 1.6 million dollars. This is due to an increase of $400,000 to the liability insurance fund as a result of increases to its general insurance premiums, as well as its minimum, its required minimum reserve levels to mitigate and support ongoing claims. The general fund allocation to the vehicle replacement fund will also increase by $600,000 as a result of bringing a fire, a new fire heavy apparatus vehicle to the vehicle replacement fund. Lastly, allocations to the information technology fund will also increase substantially in fiscal year 2122, which are due to the scheduled implementation of a new cash sharing utility ability, billing, and general billing software for, for end-of-life upgrades and replacements, as well as other IT infrastructure improvement costs. Along with adoption of the annual budget, the city also adopts an annual resolution approving and adopting the city's schedule of fees and charges for the new fiscal year and is legally required by state law to adopt an annual appropriations limit. For fiscal year 2122, there are no new fees being incorporated in the proposed budget. The fiscal year 2122 schedule of fees and charges, however, does include the addition of fees that were previously approved in fiscal year 2021, which are sidewalk vendor permit fees, which was approved back in September 2020, and then, and, and the new short-term rental permit fees, which were approved back in December 2020. These fees should generate additional revenues in charges for services, as well as additional TOT tax revenues from the new short-term rental program. Lastly, per California state law, the city is required to adopt an annual resolution approving its appropriations limit for fiscal year 2122. The annual appropriations limit, also known as the GAN limit, sets a maximum spending amount on cities in California for spending its tax proceeds, such as its property and sales tax revenues. Certain exclusions apply to the calculation, such as interest earnings and enterprise fund revenues. It is also adjusted annually to account for changes in population and consumer price index changes as provided by the state. For fiscal year 2122, the city is well under its annual appropriations limit of 233.7 million dollars, of which the city is at 76.8 million dollars. Are there any questions? And now I will hand the presentation back to Alice to discuss future financial considerations and the recommendations being requested before you this evening.
As mentioned early in this evening, city council directed the acting city manager to work with departments to identify an additional 2% to 5% in additional budget reduction measures. As temporary or permanent service level reductions are identified, these reduction options will be brought forth to city council for direction during the fiscal year. As the Department of Treasury guidelines continue to be clarified, staff will schedule a study session to discuss projected revenue loss and eligible uses of the city's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolutions to approve and adopt the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2122 and appropriate the necessary funds to meet the expenditures set forth therein. Approve the city's schedule of fees and charges for municipal services for fiscal year 2122 and repeal resolution number 2020-48, and adopt the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2122 pursuant to Article 13B of the California State Constitution. And with that, staff are available for any questions.
Okay, council member Zara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a question, just a couple of questions, actually. And, and thank you for, for the, the presentation and, and thank you for this really very tough, tough job that you had, considering the situation we're in. I just wanted to clarify on the issue of the museum. There is no line item here on that at all. But I, I'm, my assumption is that this is something that's not been settled yet and that it will come back. I just wanted you to, to clarify a little bit on that. And then the other question would be on, on our roads. I know that infrastructure is an important aspect, an important thing in our community. And I know Dr. Kozly earlier came and mentioned, you know, prioritizing infrastructure. We, in this particular budget, there is no additional allocation to, from the general fund to our roads, other than what we already get, which is approximately, what I saw was about 6 million, which is our, our regular amount that we have each year.
So I'll first begin by addressing the question as to the museum. So at the time that the pandemic had originated back in January of 2020, the shelter-in-place order was mandated by the state of California through the executive order issued by the governor. Because of that, museum operations were essentially shuttered. As part of cost reduction measures, it was determined at that time that this, that the museum would be closed, and the 2122 budget did not include reopening the museum. If memory serves me, I think the, the directive at the time was that this, the, this would give the museum association time to identify its ability to maybe operating the museum on a more self-sustaining basis. So at this point, the current proposed budget does not include reopening museum operations. Should city council like to add back opening museum operations, city council obviously is welcome to direct staff to look into that, to see what is feasible to do within the existing budget and what areas of the existing budget would need to be reduced in order to facilitate staffing and operating costs to do so.
And Ms. Chang, sorry to interrupt you on this particular point, but just to clarify, it was, it was my understanding that we, that this council did ask for an expedited reopening of the museum. I know that, that's why I was a little surprised not to see it. And I know we, the museum has a date for opening, which is July 1st, and we have an exhibit already set. And so without having any additional, an employee, at least one, to, to do the day-to-day operations, it would be very difficult to, to meet that, that deadline. And so it, it's just, you know, I, I don't know if this is an item that could be brought back, you know, soon, but we are running into a deadline issue here.
If city council would like to direct staff to look at refunding the museum, staff is obviously look, would take that direction and bring forth an agenda item to do so.
And just a question on that, if I may. So do we know how much the museum had, what they've done in terms of securing funding to be more self-supportive? Do, do we know that yet?
So, so the issue is that, I think there's, there's two issues here. There's the short term and there's a long term. The long term, absolutely not. We have, there have not been any real sort of attempts yet at, at looking at that because there was a lot of turmoil going on in the city and, and, you know, COVID and all this. So I think there's, there needs to be a, an effort in looking at that. But on the short term, if we are looking at reopening and, and creating exhibits, we, we should provide them the resources because they don't have it. Now, I know they have some, there is some cash, but that, that the museum board has. So I think there needs to be maybe a, a round of discussion with the board that could potentially result in some cost sharing, maybe?
Because I, I saw an item on this, on the, what do we call that? That tentative agenda, and it was taken off. It was an item on the museum, I think a couple of weeks ago, was there not? What is it?
I don't recall.
Yeah, it was.
I believe the museum association was to bring back an update as to reopening plans being an agenda item, is what my recollection is, but I don't have the details.
Yeah, because we usually when, when, well, in the past, when the city manager and the mayor meet on the Monday, there's a forecast agenda. And on one of those forecast agendas, there was a museum item. And when I asked about it, we had withdrawn it. Now, we can go back and look at those four, city clerk, you have copies of those forecasted agenda items. Was there not a, a museum item on there that was not included?
I'll dig around a little and see what I can find while you're discussing. I don't have it.
Yeah, because I remember seeing it and it was pulled. So I, I mean, the council, the will of this council was to bring, help get the museum open. And if it is going to open and they need some help in the, I would like to see it in the short term, because I also want to see, if an item does come back, I, I want to get an, an idea of any other museums, whether in Orange County or close counties, how many of those museums are being funded by cities and how many are generating their own revenue? I think that would be a good comparison to see what we've done in the past, what other cities have done, and where can we go?
Yeah, and Councilman Silva, that's absolutely correct. And our previous city manager, we, I had actually requested to look at this, and, and we were in the process of looking at that. You know, of course, there was the change that happened, but.
On the tentative agenda now.
Oh, is it? Okay.
For the next June meeting.
Okay, yeah, because I think that was supposed to be on, on this meeting, and it got moved. But it is, it is tentatively for next meeting, right? Okay. Let's see, where do you go? So.
So at the end of the page.
Yeah. Okay. It's here somewhere, right? Farmers Market, is that the Farmers Market agreement? Yeah.
So, so just, just, it, there, it's a, it's just a practical matter, and, and a logistical one, because there are large exhibits coming and being shipped, and so there is no one to install them. And so, so there really is, and we only have a short amount of time now. This is only 30 days to, to do all of this work and to market it and so on. And while the board may be able to do a lot of the work, there's still some physical work that may not be able to be achieved without, you know, some staffing. And so this is, this is the urgency that we're, we're in. So, and, and to, you know, waiting two weeks to, to have some sort of direction also may be a little bit of a delay. So I would hope that maybe we can somehow allocate something, maybe, maybe, I know, I see Alice here, maybe you can give us some, you know, some of your wisdom on parks and rec and what they can do for that.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if there's parks and rec, maybe we can shift some employees to help with that. But Ms. Lawyer would know more about that than I.
Yeah, unfortunately, the staff that was working at the museum was all laid off during the quarantine, and we have not hired anybody back. So we have a skeleton crew of 13 staff people. And if we take somebody off of the program that we're doing, there won't be anybody to do that one program. So it would be difficult for us to staff the museum with the staff that we have left.
Are you talking about a one-day or two-day event to help set things up? Or are you talking about an ongoing staff?
Well, I, I think for now, to just get us through at least the initial period of this exhibit to kind of figure out, but there, there, I think, I don't believe, from what I have now, you know, experienced with the museum board and, and had the discussions with them and seen the abilities, I, I think on the short term, until we figure out a, a sustainable option for this museum, we will have to subsidize it. To what degree that is, that is up to us for the, to discuss, for this council to discuss and allocate. But now, for now, there's a very legitimate logistical, practical issue, which is how do we open this exhibit and get people in? So that's something I think we, you know, maybe Alice and staff can discuss with the museum boards, who are a little bit more involved than I am.
If we, if we open, I'm sorry, if we open up the, if we give you staff to do that, but then it's open after that, is it just the library? but then it's open after that, is it just the live, the museum staff, not city staff that will keep the museum open? Or is there expected to be a city person there during that whole exhibit?
That is something we can, I mean, I believe to have that discussion with the museum board, I think that's, that's something to hear from them, what the needs are. This is, again, a logistical discussion. So, but that's, I was hoping that we would have this discussion before the budget item, this budget. But it seems like we're going a little bit on the reverse here.
Funds would have to be made available for this. So it seems to me that one item that hasn't been decided is whether or not to adopt a, an across-the-board cut of some percentage. Depending on what that cut might be, the funds could be available for what you're suggesting.
Well, and on that note, I'm just going to speak to it after public comments, ARPA funding. I know we haven't decided what to use that on and we're still getting for clarification, but I do believe some of the funding that we can use it for is what we call the, we can stabilize local government finances as a result of revenue loss due to the pandemic. And right now, from what I've seen, we have some legitimate revenue that we lost because of the pandemic. That being the sales tax, which was down 2.3 million, and the TOT tax, which is down 1.2 million. That amount, 3.5, we did lose because of the pandemic. And so I was going to suggest that we take some of our current ARPA funding and put it in the general fund so that we can have that money there, because that is revenue that we lost due to that pandemic. And we're going to get that. And I think Ms. Chang, and there's going to be a multiplier to that, right? Because we're going to take it into account. We lost as much, but we had it, we do a normal increase. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
The Department of Treasury has released guidance as to how to begin calculating the revenue loss. We're supposed to start with the base year of 1819 because that were, those were pre-pandemic revenues. On top of that, there's a 4.1% escalator that is compounded every year for that three-to-four year period to quantify that revenue loss. But we're still waiting on clarification from Treasury as to which specific revenue streams are allowable and not allowable to use in the calculation.
But at this point, because we did lose 2.3 million in sales tax and revenue, that's the money that we, that was a direct result of the COVID. So we could directly use that and knowing that that may be, that may increase by that 4.1 escalator.
Councilmember Silva, your calculation, I think, would be a very conservative estimation of the allowable revenue loss calculation for sales tax.
And so I'll take the conservative approach. If we can just maybe agree to move some of this money that we're going to get, because it was a result of the pandemic, and that may help. Well, it'll help in two ways. It'll help increase our general fund. And to my point of view, it'll help us reduce that 5% cut that we're looking for, but maybe by 1 or 2%. And that will help across the city. So that was going to be one of my suggestions when we parted back, but since we're in the discussion now.
I think one of the things we want to do is bring all of the ARPA discussion at one time with several options, so that you don't do them one-off. You do them all at the same time.
Right. But right now, we're looking for a little extra revenue to help with the museum and other things. And this, we're going to get this amount, and this is a conservative amount. We're probably going to get more than this that will be allocated to sales tax loss and TOT loss. So I'm taking the very conservative approach here to say, it's there, we're going to get it. Yeah, and we like to do it all at once, but right now, I think we're in a, what do they say, between a rock and a hard place?
And in my experience, if you do it piecemeal, you wind up spending the same money multiple times. I've seen that happen so often in budget consideration. So that's why I do appreciate Mr. Danley's comment there, is you have to look at it pretty much holistically, I believe.
And I would agree with that, but I think right now, we're in a little bit more dire straits than we would be in a normal time. So anyway, so that would be my suggestion to help offset, again, the museum and a few, instead of.
Well, the council, if they certainly want to do this on a one-off basis and you have support for it, we can make that happen. It just kind of hamstrings you further. But if that's what you want to do, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I think our capacity this evening is to adopt this budget and move forward. I think we can worry about the museum at the next meeting where it's scheduled. We can worry about funding that museum accordingly as well. Now, if we're going to respect our employees or staff, it's best served that we give them the truth and entrust them with the capacity to understand it in full and detail, have confidence in their ability to find solutions, and that they can trust in sound leadership, good guidance without selfish coercion of the public by fear and panic, which seems to have happened a lot lately. I think they believe in a vision that's much brighter and prosperous for the future. In the meantime, we have to take these austerity measures, I think they're necessary to get our health back fiscally. And in many ways, Mr. Mayor, I think our city will require a bicycle metaphor. Takes a bit to learn how to utilize as many strength, like our resiliency of our staff, the adaptability of our residents. But we need to constantly move forward in order to keep our balance. So I would move that we recommend this, or I'm sorry, that we adopt this budget with staff recommendations accordingly.
So to clarify, you're making the recommendation without making the decision about a cross-the-board cut of any sort?
I thought it was two to five was already decided.
That's what's been incorporated into the resolution as direction from city council to direct the acting city manager and the departments to identify an additional 2% to 5% in budget reduction measures. And once those are identified, to bring those back to city council for recommendation or direction.
Our first meeting is this Friday where we start to do that process, so we're getting right on it.
Yeah, two to five is still not a specific target. That's what I'm having trouble with. That's.
I think the reason is that between 2% to 5%, there's a significant, even at the 2%, even at their $3.8 million of vacancy savings, there are going to be service level impacts. And because of that, we wanted, the executive team wanted time to work with the acting city manager to identify what those dollar amounts and those service level impacts were, and then bringing them forth to city council for direction and then secondarily for action.
I can appreciate that, because when we're asked to approve a budget, we need to evaluate all those things as well, right? So what you're saying, Councilmember Jung, is we should go ahead and pass it and trust staff and work it out as we go, right?
Sir.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a couple of things. Councilmember Jung, on the museum, so what's coming back next week, it says farmer's market agreement, right? And does that include, or did I miss it? Does that include also the museum discussion, or do we need to?
It says here, sir, Fullerton Museum Center Board Fund.
Oh, Fullerton Museum, nevermind, see, I'm blind. Don't get old, because you lose your sight. Okay, never mind that. And another thing, you know, we mentioned fear and panic, but I think that's what we're also doing, when we're saying we're going to cut our services, anywhere from 2% to 5% to 10%. That draws fear and panic into our staff, who are residents, into some of the services we provide. So, you know, I think either way, we're causing that. It's not just saying we need this because of it now, but cutting services does cause fear and panic to a lot of people.
Well, I think what's causing it, Councilmember Silva, is that we do have a structural deficit. We have an imbalanced budget, at least for the near term. There is the wild card of one-time monies, which have come to us from federal sources and how those might be utilized. One of the concerns would be to utilize one-time monies in an ongoing overhead expense manner. And that's part of the danger of this, is if we miss this opportunity to actually correct our structural imbalance, our deficit that we have, at least over this timeframe for the next few years, we have to be very careful how we use those one-time monies.
No, and I am going to agree with you, but again, it says here that we can use it for a result of revenue loss. And we did lose the sales tax and the TOT tax because of the COVID. So that's the legitimate expense that we need to fill that gap.
And I'm with you on getting the museum active again.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
We suffer a cost when it's not being utilized, when that asset is not being put to a proper purpose. Yes, Councilmember Jung?
Just to reiterate for Councilman, while we've lost revenue, sir, we've, Calper's pension cost liabilities are over $3 million for this budget. That'll only increase as we move along, as you well know. Indeed, our vacancy savings barely cover that additional general fund drain. And our cost of liability insurance has gone up because of all these frivolous lawsuits, and that continues to increase. You know, we have to update our previously archaic IT infrastructure as well, as Ms. Chang noted. So, you know, there are a lot of things that we have to course correct on, sir, and I don't know that utilizing one-time funds is going to allow us to do that. So I believe we should pass this budget, knowing that the staff will come back with a 2% to 5% cut. That is necessary. This is not resulting in fear or promoting fear in the public, sir. This is a necessary cut. We have to do that in order to maintain our fiscal health. And, you know, again, like I said, I think we can have these discussions as we move forward. But this evening, I think it's best that we adopt the budget and move forward accordingly. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, and I guess we're going to disagree on this. I don't believe this is a necessary cut that we need to take, because there is that funding that we could input there, that we would have had in a normal year, and any cuts would have been reduced. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying use this forever. I'm saying use it for what it's intended for. In a normal year, we would have had that 3.5 million available. We could have used that to balance the budget. So bring it back in now. And I understand what you're saying, Councilman Jung, that we have to tie in our belt and, you know, debit's got to equal credit. But I think I don't believe that this 5% cut is a must.
And that pretty much highlights what the concerns are about just passing a budget and incrementally working on a small piece at a time as we go forward. I mean no disrespect to staff. I think you've done a very good job on this. But to just blind faith say that in the interchange between council and particular areas of interest by council members, that we're going to arrive at a consolidated budget that does meet that demand, which Councilmember Jung is talking about, demand for some reform at this stage. So that's, that's my concern about, and, but we do have a motion to approve this budget at this stage.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I believe this is a public hearing, if we may hear from the public at this point.
Yes, we will.
Appreciate that.
We will. And, yeah, no more questions for Ms. Chang at this point, I guess. I'm sorry, should have mentioned that. I will open the public hearing and invite members of public to speak to this item.
Anybody who has comments on this item, please come to the microphone and light up on the wall and we'll get you in the rotation. Whoever's closest, please go ahead and start.
Hello, my name is Bernard and I am a Fullerton resident. I am explicitly addressing the council majority, or two of the three that are here. Councilman Jung, Mayor Whitaker, what is your no-tax solution to fixing our roads that you three campaigned on? It seems evident from this budget that without adding additional revenue, we're not going to be able to achieve that. I ask that no cuts may be made in public safety or public works, as it will compromise our services. But rather, please, find ways to use the ARPA funds to replenish employment for now and then look at revenue measures for long term. I can't believe I'm actually saying this. It's like explaining that the world is not flat. Listen carefully, it's not zero sum. Equal rights for others does not mean less rights for you. Go Bruins.
Good evening.
I just wanted to know you guys have a tough thing to do, but please just make sure that you don't cut funds for the safety. Today in the morning, I got two of my cars open, and I even felt bad to call the police because I know they can't, they don't even have people to go. And I know they have other things. I mean, my car is whatever, you know, they open there, but that, you know, if someone else is having a domestic violence or something else, I'd rather them to go to the other places. So I don't want to be making those choices on, if I call if they rob my car, or I let them do other calls. So please, try to do your best and not cut safety. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Council Mayor Whitaker. And also, this is, this is a big concern for us, because I know you have, you guys are the decision maker in this concern for keeping a very healthy budget for our city. In our areas, and I know this is happening all over Fullerton, we have struggling a lot with safety. This is over and over, cars breaking, reporting to the police department. We are short in staff. The city, their job is to provide services. And if we are cutting staff, who's going to provide those services? I think it's logical to think if you're cutting the staff, who's going to make that job? Are we going to put all the job in less people to do it? What is going to be then the approach of this council? We are having the cuts in our staff. And of course, if we are telling them that we're going to be cut, a lot of people are going to be looking for another job, because it's upcoming. Everybody have a family to feed and provide. This show our loyalty to our staff in the city. We expect them to be loyal to us, then let's be loyal to them and treat them, we, you see, like we are a family here in the city of Fullerton. And this is, I know it's a very hard decision, but it has to, we have to have a resolution. Is money coming from federal? There are millions of dollars that come in to help and subsidize cities. Why we're not taking that money to keep our staff? We have a lot of empty positions in our city, and now we want to cut more. And this is, you know, our parks are really bad. They're telling us 13 staff, that is not enough. 51 parks in our city to attend. And we're doing the best that we can, different organizations, nonprofit, but you know, it's not enough. That is our city, that have to work with the staff we have right now. We expect them to do more job, but we're not giving them security. And that is, for me, doesn't make sense. We have to treat them with respect. We cannot overload them with more job when we're not even offering them money. When it started pandemic, a lot of our staff, they take pay cuts. They didn't ever receive back. And they're still loyal to our city and they're still working for us. And now we're going to cut more staff? What is the message we're giving to our staff in the city of Fullerton? And how we're going to attract new employees if we are treating like this our, our older employees that we have for a long time here? Please, let's think about that. And public safety is a must in our city. Don't cut, please our public safety. Thank you.
Just a quick question, is 70% of the budget is, it goes to salaries, right? 70% of the budget. So that leaves a 30% for any service, any services. We know when you are a household and you, you're in charge of your house, you know exactly where to put the money, where does the money goes. I think this is not only because of the pandemic deficit, but I think it's been going for years, the overspending. You're telling us we don't have money for this, but you're spending almost $300,000 on advisory. And the advisory's job is to tell you, where do we need cement on the parks? Where do we need a bench? Where do we need a tree? Where do we need maybe a water fountain? But just that, advisors. You have the people, you have residents coming here willing to sacrifice. You have the people, you have residents coming here willing to sacrifice their time. It's 9:20, and you have the people to tell you exactly what we need. And we, 70% goes on salaries and pensions, I believe. 30% for the people's services. Come on, do the math. What do we need? What do we know don't need? And maybe you have the Fox Theater, open it up. Do some concerts, do some, I don't know, something that could create revenue to the city. Do more hotels. We have a lot of people coming and spending money in the restaurants. And they're, you know, there's a lot of people. Use it, use ways to bring revenue. Don't just throw money out there. Don't just go like that and throw the money. Use it wisely, but bring revenue to the city. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Seeing no more speakers, Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom calls?
First caller, Jane Reifer.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, my hand was actually up still by mistake from the consent calendar process where I had been trying to pull a consent item. I protest that the council accepted public comment on an item that was not pulled from the consent calendar while several of us were trying to pull an item from the consent calendar. I guess I got to say that now, but I certainly never got to give my comment regarding an important issue. The maps changed that you approved tonight, a bunch of things changed. And the council was unaware because they were not able to hear public comment. And I'm sorry about that. I hope that can change in the future. I hope there can be announcement that public comment is about to close and that during consent, that an attempt is made to ask if the public is pulling any item from the consent calendar. Thank you.
Tanya McGory.
Good evening, Council, Tanya McGory again. While we're discussing budgets, I did want to point out that two of the councilmen, Silva and Zara, who are pushing for the museum opening, are the very same two who cost us $800,000 in a baseless and immoral lawsuit to cover up a massive mistake made by a city employee that would have exposed serious corruption by our police department. Along with Silva and Zara, former councilmembers Glory and Fitzgerald together cost us $800,000 with your votes. I'm a big fan of the museum. I believe it's one of the gems within our city, and I would love to see it reopened. So perhaps between the four of you, you could each pay back $200,000. That would more than cover our museum opening. I'd also like to point out the fact that Silva and Zara voted against a special specific tax to fix our roads and went for a general tax instead, which the city of Fullerton flatly voted down. Wherever the funds go, we would like our $800,000 back. So if you could find a way to let us know how that will be repaid. Thank you so much.
With that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers.
Okay, and so with that, I will close the public hearing. Bring the item back to the council. Ms. Chang.
You had the recommendations before you, so we're just waiting for city council action. I think before we begin, Councilmember Zara did have a question regarding general fund allocation towards street and roads. And there is none in the 2122 budget. I believe at the last streets and roads study session that was held by Public Works, the majority of the money for streets and roads is coming from gas tax and Measure M allocations.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I do have also another question after your hearing our public as well. And looking at this a little closely, I just wanted to clarify the resolution that you have. Does it bind the, bind us with the 2% to 5% budget cuts?
It is a directive to the city manager to identify the additional 2% to 5% budget reduction measures. And what is brought forth to city council will then be at the city council's discretion as to what it would like to approve or not approve in terms of budget reduction measures.
Because, I mean, I'm a little surprised that it's in the resolution. It was my assumption that we are passing a budget right now on a sort of a temporary basis in order just to get the, you know, the legal aspect of it out of the way. We have to pass a budget tonight. But the, that the, that we would have a chance later on to discuss the 2% to 5% cuts alongside our discussion with ARPA because it's a little bit more nuanced, in my opinion, that, you know, looking at labor negotiations, some we can, some we can't change at this time. So a 2% to 5% commitment right now is a little bit hard to swallow. And, you know, while the direction of the council remains there for us to reassess, I would not be inclined to support a resolution that has it at this point in this discussion.
The city council's direction is to strike Section 2B from the resolution. Staff are available to take that direction this evening.
And I'm not saying I'm not open to having that discussion. I'm just saying if we were to, and also to address the concerns of Councilman Silva so that just we can move this item tonight. And I know that it seems like we will have another discussion on the museum, so we can always look at that separately. But I would prefer not to have this commitment without looking at the full picture.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
The, we've had this discussion with regards to the 2% to 5% at the last budget study discussion. And the council majority agreed that 2% to 5% was where our expectations were. Thus, you see it in the resolution. I would not be supportive of the decision without that included. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And then, so, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that's Section 2. Is it 2A or 2B? Because it's.
Section 2, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's the second paragraph of Section 2A.
And so this just tells us that we have to bring it back. But I think I'm tending to see that this is the same thing as our ARPA. We need to make those decisions together because depending on what we can use ARPA for, I'm thinking, like, again, I'm thinking this 2% to 5% may be reduced because we want to get back into a place before COVID where the money would have been in the general fund, and those cuts wouldn't be as severe.
Councilman, it's just to bring you options for cuts from 2% to 5%. You can choose to do that or not do that.
Well, can we bring this back, put this, so we can bring it back when we have the ARPA discussion?
Well, we're going to have all of those together.
Right, but this is happening now, right?
Well, we're doing, we're doing the cut analysis, and we're doing ARP at the same time. And we want to bring them back together so you can consider cuts and money at the same time.
So could we direct you to bring that analysis without having it in the resolution?
Can you legally do it? The answer is yes. On the other hand, having said that, the resolution itself does not bind the city or the council. It just simply asks the manager to identify certain measures. And that certainly can be done in the context of the ARPA money. And the council will then make the final decision. So whether it's in or out of the resolution, the bottom lines with the budget are being approved. And you're given specific direction to city manager to come back to identify those proposed cuts. I think it's consistent with Mr. Jung's remarks a few minutes ago.
I think also the reason it was put in there was because we're dipping below the $10 million contingency reserve. So we're telling people, this is what we're doing to address that.
Right.
And that's why I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Jung that that resolution should be in there. This, we already covered this. This has already been decided that we want that information and that ability to act on that. So removing the resolution is something I wouldn't support either.
And staff can take direction this evening, should the council like, if they're inclined to adopt all the recommended actions and then also provide secondary discretion to bring both the budget reduction measures that are to be identified along with the update for ARPA at the same meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
The compromise was made with regards to Councilman Silva's request to utilize contingency reserve funds. I think 2% to 5% is reasonable to get us in better fiscal health. You know, spending reserves on anything is a ten amount to borrowing from your future. We don't have rainy day fund. Should a rainy day happen like COVID, we need more of the federal government to rescue us out of it. So I think the compromise was ample. It was made. This should be passed with the resolutions in place. And we can have these further discussions on what cuts are necessary as they're presented to us in piecemeal. But for the time being, in the interest of adopting this budget, I think we should do so with all the resolutions included, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And with your earlier motion, before we had heard public comment, I failed to provide a second. I do that at this time, as long as your motion stands, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you, Mr. Jung. Yeah, we did have that discussion and that compromise. So in the spirit of the compromise, I would be okay with this. If we can include that 3.5 million from sales tax and TOT tax to reduce the need for the reserves. Like you said, taking it from a reserve is not a good idea. If we include this money now that we should have had and will have into our general fund, that will put less stress on our reserves, and we won't be taking as much. So I would, I would offer a alternative motion to include the 2.3 sales tax and 1.2 TOT tax from the ARPA into the general fund and move forward with this.
I'm not quite sure.
It dies.
Yeah, what you're asking for.
He's asking for a friendly amendment.
I'm asking to put that 3.5 into the general fund now because we have the money. We have the 16.2 in the bank.
Well, let me ask, is that, do we know if that's an allowable use for that money right now?
We're still waiting on clarification.
Yeah, so we don't know if we can do that yet.
Again, in here it says to stabilize local government finance as a result of revenue loss. We lost sales tax revenue because of COVID. We lost TOT tax because of COVID. And this is the conservative amount, given that we're going to have an escalator of 4.1. And this is a very low conservative amount that we will have, we will get. And I'm just asking to put it in now so that we can reduce our need to tap into our reserve funds. So put it in the general fund. It'll allow us to move this item with an additional 3.5 million in the general fund.
Councilmember Jung.
Yes, count to Councilman Silva's point, we just don't know as to what we can actually use the American Rescue Plan monies for at this point. And until that clarification comes out and we know for the letter of the law exactly what it can be utilized, once again, I encourage you, sir, to move this item along, support the resolution as is, as staff recommended. And we can have these constructive discussions from the dais as we're moving along. But in the interest of time, sir, I think this is, we best that we move this forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, again, there was no second, so we have the original motion on the table.
That's accurate.
I second.
No, that's his original.
Mr. Silva made a motion that was not seconded.
Okay, gotcha. I thought he was seeking a friendly amendment.
Well, I was, but it was.
I've got you.
Crickets.
All right, so with that, we do have a motion and a second at this stage. Is there further discussion prior to taking a vote on this? Seeing none, we'll go for a roll call.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes 3 to 1.
Thank you, Ellis and Stephen. Appreciate the work.
We are at item number eight on our agenda, which is outdoor dining program use of city alleyways prepared by Kelly Fritzel, Acting Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. We're actually here based on a request by Councilmember Fred Jung to discuss the closed alleyways. And so just back in, when the pandemic started, the city council wanted to be very business friendly. So May 5th, the city council relaxed our outdoor dining regulations for both private and public use of land for outdoor dining, outdoor services, outdoor retail. The city council recently extended this program through September 30th of this year. And it's been a very successful program. We have issued over 60 permits for outdoor dining services. And a majority of those are continuing. At the recommendation of the city council, we are looking and working with both Active Transportation Committee and Parking, Transportation and Parking Committee regarding the future of allowing some long-term outdoor dining, such as Walk on Wilshire and also Indision, potentially a couple other places near the transit center. So, but there is one area, and I put it up on the screen so everybody can see, that is what we call the SoCo area. And we closed the alleyway right behind Divine, Play Coffee, Joe's, Domino's, Roscoe's, Jay's Cuisine, Hero's, all amazing restaurants. You should all go and try them. But with that closure, we have really created a bottleneck. And I think the council member can tell everybody firsthand, the bottleneck is actually really hurting our public safety out there in this area. And also, what we call this, the East Rest Closure. On the North South Closure between Commonwealth and Santa Fe, JP 23 is using their parking lot as outdoor dining. And that's pushed the queue line into that North South Alleyway that is in effect closing it also down to our emergency vehicles. We see this, and the police chief is here, so he can interrupt me if he'd like, especially at night at closing times. People are coming across the street from the other side of Commonwealth, and they're really getting jammed up in here. The queue lines are hard, you know, very long. There's fights occurring, there's trash. So based on the council member's observation, staff absolutely does support his recommendation for at the minimum, opening up the closed alleyway between Divine and Jay's Cuisine. It actually only will impact two outdoor dining permits because it is only Joe's and Jay's Cuisine that is using that area. So with that, we have the police chief here. We have public works staff upstairs if you'd like to hear from them. But we're here at your request and here to answer any questions, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. There was one other closed alley that's in, there you go. If you could speak on that, Director Fritzel.
Okay, this is behind Mulberry, Rialto, all the way down to Revolucion, and also Made Coffee. I can do the entire city by food. So a lot of the Roman Cucina, Zings, and Revolucion are the ones that have outdoor dining. They have pushed their outdoor dining in a little bit more permanent status to where there's only four feet, five feet of open area, especially over here from Made Coffee to Roman Cucina. Alumni Bar and Grill is actually in the renovation and does not have, is not open yet. Mulberry Street and Rialto closer to Walk on Wilshire is open, but it's really from Zings down that has created a problem. And that also has not allowed the police to drive through if need it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Chief Dunn, so in your estimation, starting with the previous slide with the other alleys, is it safer for the public and officers if we, A, open up that alley again that's going east-west, and B, help that, remove that queue line from JP 23's at the end of the night? Because I know there was a report where recently we had every available officer there, including Cal State Fullerton, because there was an incident. So if we eliminate those two issues on this, is that going to make it safer for our residents and our, most importantly, our police? Or not most importantly, but just as equally importantly, our police?
In short, yes, sir. I've been out there myself on the weekends, working side by side with our officers, and have witnessed the congregation of folks in those particular areas, which makes policing at closing time especially very challenging. It would be my responsibility. It would be my recommendation to take a look at all outdoor dining that impacts that particular area and look at discontinuing that effort because we have now increased our indoor dining capacity, which we had added this when we couldn't be inside. And now we're kind of seeing the double capacity issue. And the outdoor dining closes before closing, so around midnight, and everybody is then pushed inside the establishments, which causes a lot of friction between people who have been consuming alcoholic beverages. And so the recommendation from my staff is to take a look at it holistically, but certainly the areas outlined here would be a tremendous help to public safety.
And if you can go to the other slide, please, Ms. Fritzel, the one with the other alley. So on this, you know, the north part of that alley was, has been closed in terms of no vehicles can go through there. And so we allowed the dining over here by Zing's, Roma Caccina, and so forth. So that, I think you said it was less troublesome than the other one, or is it?
Yeah, the particular issue that we're seeing here, where this alley depicted here and then coming across to where the Matador and some other establishments are, what happens is because the outdoor dining has taken up the parking, the queue lines now come down the sidewalk and they're actually touching. And because of the reduced capacity, people are spending two or three hours in line waiting to get into these establishments and not getting in, which then causes more friction. So it's kind of like a confluence of a few factors.
Right. So, okay, and then so I guess, so you would, the suggestion would be that to eliminate all that outdoor dining there that we allowed during the COVID, including as far north as Roma Caccina. And I think even Mulberry had tables out there, so that would be.
But that's on Walk on Wilshire.
No, 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 but on the alley though. They had it on the alley too. They had a little bar set up right there in the alley.
They have, they're no longer using that since they were able to go back inside.
All right. And then is that, Close on Wilshire, is that causing any trouble for you guys in terms of, because it's closed?
No, in fact, most of the night, when it's closing time, most people are not even in that area, which would actually help with the crowd management if people did utilize that area. It just seems like people are kind of confined to a small space and that contact with each other causes the fights.
Okay. And then just one other question, can you go back to the other slide, please? And so just out of the blue there, would it, we would get kind of the same results in terms of outdoor dining and maybe relieving some of the pressure if we decided to close Ambridge and allow those restaurants to come onto Ambridge, just like we did on Wilshire? I mean, I don't know if you can answer that, but someone?
Well, Ambridge is, we have four different access to the parking lot there.
That's right.
And that's our largest parking lot and most used. So staff, and I don't think public works would, they wouldn't even let me in the room. So staff would support closing down Ambridge.
All right, thank you.
And I love outdoor dining, but.
And I think it's worth mentioning, sir, that we did meet with, when we had the problems that you mentioned that first night, that Councilmember Jung witnessed firsthand, we did meet with all the business owners. I did kind of indicate that it would be my desire to look at some sort of discontinuation of that, and I did not get much pushback. In fact, what we heard from many of the business owners is they're having a tremendous difficulty in hiring and retaining the right kind of staff to police these lines, which is actually part of their security plans that they submitted. And we're not necessarily going after them for not conforming to their security plans. We'd rather them hire the right security guards than ones that are going to kind of perpetuate the problem. And so we're trying to work with them in a way to trying to find a happy medium, if you will. Certainly, we're responsible, public safety wanted to be safe, but we're also listening and communicating with the business community to try to make it as palatable as possible for them.
All right, well, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Councilmember Jung, you were signaling.
Mr. Mayor, these are just the unintended consequences of trying to do the right thing by, by local government, trying to support local businesses. But now that the economy is open in full, the state of California is about a few days away from giving a green light go, I, I think this is, it's time that we do this in the interest of public safety, our police officers, our firefighters, that we open up these alleyways and stop inadvertently doubling the capacity of these clubs and restaurants. Hero's with that huge footprint in the parking lot, they've effectively doubled their capacity, as has JP 23 and host of other restaurants and clubs. So I think this is the least we could do if we're going to champion public safety as we so often want to do, is to open up these alleyways and allow our officers to clear them in the interest of public safety. Thank you, sir.
Now, we do have, those lines have become much more difficult, much larger, in part because of social distancing requirements inside, right? And we are, we are two, we are two weeks yet away from having some relief on those requirements. What, I know what staff has done throughout the pandemic is try to allow people at least to make the best use of their area. If we choose just certain areas to still allow and sustain outdoor, but we rule against other areas, we lose some of that equity, some of what we've been trying to do to allow people to weather this situation. And that's why, as long as we still have the social distancing requirements, and as long as some people either have an advantage or a disadvantage in terms of that accessible outside space in the meantime, I think, I don't know, I'd be a little bit hesitant to make a change at this stage. We've received a large amount of support for people who are serving, you know, serving food mostly in these overflow areas, and the public seems to support it as well. So while there might be critical paths that need to be freed, alleys that need to be freed, I would agree with that part of it, but wholesale to start trying to move everyone indoors again at this stage, I don't know about that. That's something I think is going to lead to a number of other consequences that are not going to be constructive.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I, I agree on the, on what you just said. I think we do have to look at our, some of these critical spaces that may affect public safety, and I'm supportive of that. But I'd like us to start looking at, you know, using this opportunity to improve our dining and attract more people because this is, you know, good revenue for our city. There is a lot of public support for the outdoor dining and to the extent where we can look at this and study this in a more organized way where public safety is a component in it. I know there's other elements like, you know, bike pathways and stuff like that that needs to be addressed as well. But I would love for us to move in a direction where we expand and utilize some of our public space for outdoor dining. I think it sets us apart from other cities and revitalizes our downtown in ways that we, we didn't, couldn't imagine before COVID. But as for this particular item on these alleyways, I'm supportive of this. I think there is, there are certainly concerns for, for safety and so, but definitely we need to make sure that we hopefully bring back an item, you know, on a, sort of a larger study on where we can expand. Thank you.
And that's the direction that the mayor and the city council has given staff to look at those that would like it. That's why we're going through the committee process right now. We will come back with the full report, who wants to, you know, keep their outdoor dining. In these two areas, again, it's impacting minimal, and they are utilizing indoors more than outdoors. So I, this would not be as large of an impact.
Mr. Mayor, also, if I could speak on the fire side, just with Chief Dunn, we do have that impact as well when we're trying to respond to EMS calls in both those areas. So a lot of times when we go and it is closing time and there happens to be a medical emergency there, we are, we are delayed in getting to the actual patient because there are so many people, and the walk to get through that is, is extremely challenging. And many times during that, during that time, we do have to work with, with police to get to that point. So fire is also very, is concerned of those two areas. That would help, help us a lot to help out our businesses to make sure that their occupants remain safe.
I appreciate that, what you're saying, and it does sound as though we do have majority direction for dealing with these particular pinch point problems. But that larger conversation, I think, would be better served at another time, not to provide direction on an expanded program tonight. Is that agreeable? Okay. With that, then, we have provided direction, yes. Oh, thank you. Any members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please come forward to the microphone.
And do we have any Zoom comments on this item? Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong screen.
We do not.
Thank you.
They're all standing in line downtown. So, yeah.
I'd move this item, sir.
Oh, well, it doesn't really require.
Does it require that?
It was just a direction.
Very good.
Based upon the council discussion and direction, we'll come back then with appropriate council action regarding these alleys.
Very good. Thank you.
And then just for future, I know we're going to discuss other alfresco areas. I would like to, when that comes back, can we include that alley next to La Amis? Do we need that alley open there? Anyway, just, if that could be included in any future discussions of opening up more alfresco space?
We'll always discuss opening up.
All right, thank you.
Item number nine, we have the subject proposed sanitation charge reduction, prepared by Meg McWade, Director of Public Works. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The item in front of you this evening relates to the city's sanitation charges. And I have control. Yes, thank you. I do, oops. So how are the sanitation charge revenues used? And the sanitation charge is used to fund storm drain cleaning, street sweeping, drainage system, and channel maintenance, concrete curbing gutters, among other things. What it no longer is used for, although back in the 1960s and 70s it was designed for this, is sewer maintenance. In 2005, the city was under orders in order to fund its sewer system, and as a result, created a sewer enterprise fund, and no longer had major sewer maintenance costs within the sanitation charge funds. The use of sanitation charge revenues is predominantly for the operational expenses I mentioned, the tree trimming, the street sweeping, the sanitation and storm drain cleaning, as well as stormwater compliance. A portion of the fund is also used for drainage maintenance and drainage improvements, so our storm drain system. But why am I in front of you this evening? The sanitation charge is tied, this fee that was developed back in the 60s and 70s is tied to water charges. And the rates that were approved two years ago for water systems were not intended to increase the sanitation charge. So each year we have come to reduce the sanitation charge to ensure that by virtue of the water rate adjustments, this fee is not also being increased. So you can see, although in 1978 through June 30th of 2019, it stayed at 25%. Since that time, we have lowered it each year. So in 2020, we've lowered it to 22%. In 2021, we proposed, we lowered it to 19%. And this most recent proposal is to lower it for the next two years, 17% multiplied by the water charges, and then effective July 1st, 2022, multiply, 16% multiplied by water charges. The next steps really relate to hiring a consultant to look at the stormwater fee. A lot of things have changed over time from legislation to litigation and court cases. And so there is a need to look at it a little bit closer. We have released an RFQ to solicit consultants that can actually help us determine what is the best approach for this fee. And we plan to, this consultant will provide guidance regarding the Prop 218 compliance issues, and then also assist with any appropriate public process. We also plan to involve INRAC, the Infrastructure Natural Resources Advisory Committee, to serve as citizens and council representation as we develop the fee. Ultimately, it will go in front of INRAC, but ultimately in front of city council. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution modifying the sanitation charge percentage for the next two years.
I'll move the item before we go to public comment.
Second. All right, item moved and seconded. Are there any questions at this stage of Ms. McWade? Seeing, seeing none, we'll ask for public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward to the microphone. Not seeing any takers.
And do we have any Zoom comments on this item?
There are no Zoom callers.
Okay, so we'll bring the item back to council. We do have a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, I see none, we'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes four zero.
All right, next item number 10. The subject is hero pay, prepared by Anissa Levas.
Excellent. Oh, trouble with earrings. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is the discussion item related to hero pay, also known as hazard pay. I want to repeat for those in the audience and those watching online that no ordinance is being proposed this evening, but staff is seeking further direction from the city council at the close of this presentation regarding this item. Over the past several months, several jurisdictions throughout the course of the pandemic have implemented hero pay ordinances to provide short-term pay benefits to frontline grocery workers, retail workers, and drug pharmacy store workers. Thank you, Kelly. So what is a hero pay ordinance? Hazard pay ordinances typically require covered employers to pay $4 to $5 extra an hour to the frontline grocery and drug retail employees for an average of 120 days. These ordinances define and contain the following information, language within their ordinances. Premium hazard pay. So this is how much premium pay will covered stores be required to pay employees in addition to all other forms of compensation. Coverage for hourly employees. Most of the ordinances define the covered employees as those who are hourly. And in addition, there is language in the ordinances that include anti-retaliation language, language giving workers the right to sue non-compliant employers, and also requires employers to notify their employees of the ordinance. Next slide. So these are just some examples of some of the provisions that staff has seen throughout Southern California. So the first example is grocery, retail, and drug retail stores with 300 to 500 employees or more nationwide, and have more than 10 to 15 employees at a store that primarily sells grocery items. Another example within the provisions are retail stores over a certain amount of square feet. We've seen typically the range between 50 to 85,000 square feet, 10% of which is dedicated to either groceries or drug retail. Next would be retail stores that are more than 15,000 square feet and sell 70% of groceries and generate 70% of revenues from groceries. So some examples here in Fullerton would be our Ralph's, Amazon Fresh, Sprouts. Continuing on, provisions also include drug retail stores that sell a variety of prescription and non-prescription medicines. So some direct examples for Fullerton, CVS, Rite Aid, Walgreens, and then superstores that sell grocery as well as non-grocery items. So this would be Target. So who would not be covered or who would not be mandated to follow the ordinance? So grocery and drug retail stores that have below 300 to 500 national employees, grocery and drug retail stores that have below 10 to 15 employees in a single location, and any grocery or drug retail that has less than 15,000 square feet. Some examples are 7-Eleven, AMPM, other gas stations. So in the staff reports, we did a comprehensive review of all cities who have considered this within Southern California. For the purposes of this presentation, we're just focusing on Orange County cities who have considered this item. As you can see from the slide, Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Irvine, and Buena Park have all passed hero hazard pay ordinances. The majority with 120-day terms, Buena Park with a 90-day term. All cities considered a $4 in extra pay increase. However, the cities of Tustin and Anaheim have not proceeded with going forward with a hero pay ordinance. And with that, I will wrap up my presentation. We just seek further discussion and direction of staff of if we want to proceed with this item going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring the item to the council for discussion before asking for public input. Is there anything to be stated at this time, or would you rather hear from the public first?
Just one question. On those cities that passed the ordinance, do we know when they started that and how long they're into their 120 or 90-day?
Yes, let me pull up. In the attachment of the staff report,
I missed it.
I've identified 20 cities who have considered it. And with that, you can see the date implemented and the date expires.
I missed it. Thank you.
No, that's okay. You can see that the average expiration of those who have approved these ordinances is July 14th, 2021. Again, that's just an average.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, seeing.
Yeah, I did have just one question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are cities, I believe some of them have faced some legal action.
That's correct.
Do we know what the status of that is?
Let me see, based off my staff reports, I believe no formal, you know, litigation has come forward or been determined. I just know that they're in the process of doing so. And it's primarily been brought up by the Grocers Association, so.
So with that, we will ask members of the public at this stage if you wish to speak to this item, to come forward.
Just a few questions. So this increase of pay, who will be responsible? The employer, or federal, or city? Who?
Sorry. Sure. Would you like me to respond or wait until after public comment?
No, go ahead.
Okay, sure. So this ordinance is primarily would mandate the employer to implement a wage increase. And how that is handled by the city is that the ordinance allows those employees to sue those employers for not following that mandate.
So that means that likely consumers would actually pay this over time?
Over time.
That's the way the market works.
Raise up the, just like the gas prices racing up. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers at this stage, we'll inquire about Zoom comments.
At this time, we have two Zoom callers. Kevin Sanchez, please unmute.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kevin Sanchez and I am here to speak on item 10 on behalf of the California Grocers Association. CGA respectfully asks you to not move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance given the state of the reopening of the economy combined with the negative consequences to grocery workers, neighborhoods, and the grocery industry. We agree that grocery workers serve a vital and essential role during the pandemic. They have worked tirelessly to keep stores open for consumers, allowing our communities to have uninterrupted access to food and medications. To protect our employees, grocery stores were among the first and continue to implement numerous safety protocols, including providing PPE and masks, performing wellness checks, and enhancing sanitation and cleaning, limiting store capacity, and instituting social distance requirements. Grocery employees have also received a minimum of 160 hours of additional supplemental paid leave to care for themselves and their families. This is on top of their already existing leave benefits. Most importantly, the industry fought for early access to the vaccine for all grocery workers who have been eligible since February. Across California, all grocery workers have been able to receive the vaccine and take paid leave to do so. A broad reopening of the economy in Fullerton and across California is currently underway. We believe it is inconsistent and harmful to reopening efforts for a local jurisdiction to label grocery stores as the hazard when it is not supported by evidence and while simultaneously pushing to reopen hospitality, entertainment, and other retail operations. Finally, this policy would increase employment costs to grocers by as much as 30% overnight. The significant increase would severely impact store viability and result in increased prices for groceries, limited operating hours, reduced hours for workers, fewer workers per store, and most concerning, possible store closures. We respectfully implore the council to not move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance at this time. Thank you.
MLL, please unmute.
I wanted to say that I absolutely agree with the previous speaker. I think his name is Kevin from the Grocers Association. I also think that as it relates to this particular measure, this particular proposal, the most common sense thing to do is for local government to stay out of those discussions and not take an opinion either way. At this point in time, we need to maintain a positive environment for businesses as well as an environment where other businesses would like to open the city of Fullerton, thereby increasing not only our tax revenue, but reasons for people to shop here and to stay here. The second part of, the second thing that I wanted to bring up regarding this is that when you do push forward a measure like this and you take a position regarding one group, you automatically have to then naturally support other groups that may use similar arguments. That would mean that anybody who works at a hospital should absolutely be promoted to make more money or get more time off if the city is proposing that we do that for grocery workers. We should also then do that for the maintenance staff that works anywhere where they may be exposed to any sort of biohazard or any sort of disease. You end up in a situation where you'll naturally have to promote this for everybody. And just like the previous speaker said, those costs will always go to the consumer. Just like we're seeing in some places where the minimum wage has been raised extremely high for waiters and waitresses and servers of the like, people are not only tipping less, but they're shopping less, and all those fees and increases are going straight to the consumer. I would really appreciate if council decides to stay out of this issue and allow businesses to operate in the way that makes the most sense for them as well as their consumers. Thank you.
There are no additional Zoom callers.
Okay, we'll bring the item back to council. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Zara.
Thank you. So this item was, we wanted to bring this item because I know that many cities have been incorporating this. I think the grocery workers seeking this was a result of other businesses adding hero pay. So there were a lot of businesses and hospital work, hospitals that actually incorporated heroes pay and during the pandemic and offered extra pay for their employees. Grocery workers and grocery stores, large chains, even though they had record profits during the COVID time because of increased sales, they refused and that, I believe, was the result, as a result of that, that pushed the grocery workers to start actively advocating for this and seeking the help of cities. And so what really, what we wanted, what I wanted to do here is just to kind of shed light on the topic and just have a better understanding and seek out also, you know, some ideas from my council colleagues. There's certainly no action to be taken tonight other than looking at the issue from a sort of a broad perspective, you know, point of view and also seeing, you know, how applicable this could be in the city of Fullerton. So, you know, with that, I'd like to hear from my council colleagues. And I appreciate the folks who spoke on this issue as well and their side of the story.
Councilmember Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. Frontline grocery workers, retail staff, fast food employees, even food delivery service drivers all provided an extraordinary service during the pandemic, and we should all acknowledge that. Cities like Irvine and Long Beach passed mandatory wage increases via their municipal government. And the California Grocers Association sued both cities and being adjudicated right now in court. There is a commitment that needs to be made by this council to make every effort not to squander the people's money on preventable lawsuits. I think this is one that we can prevent. The responsible thing for any elected official to do when considering both the timing of this agenda item and the fiscal well-being of the city and its taxpayers is to advocate for steady and equitable vaccination of its citizens, not to demand wage inflation from private businesses. Grocery stores or private businesses that have a board of directors, executive staff that determine pay scales and appropriate bonuses or dividends. That determination should not be made by elected officials or municipal government. Again, I question the timing on this matter and why this item wasn't brought up last year in the height of the pandemic. Why this is an item that even needs to be agendized now when California is days away from fully reopening is kind of a shock to me. This seems to be more of perhaps another opportunity for politicians to look good on social media, powerful labor groups than egalitarian representation of any kind. I assume that's the problem with only having a hammer, Mr. Mayor. Everything looks like a nail. So I wouldn't be supportive of moving forward at all on this item. I think it's a non-issue that vaccination has now cured the problem that this speaks to, and we should promote that, not this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Jung. I recall in the last little bit more than a year that it was hazardous for everyone, even for consumers to go and shop, considering all the requirements and the difficulties and the unknowns about this pandemic. This seems to be, at this stage, almost, to use an old country kind of thing, is closing the barn door after the cow has already left, has already escaped. So the timing on it is difficult. What's also difficult about the timing is that we are already experiencing very high food inflation just about across the board. And inflation is indeed a larger threat all the time as we're going forward. But just as was mentioned, to lead with this over certain categories is going to certainly create a lot of other categories. And we as consumers, we're going to lose that option of voting with our feet, being able to go where we think that we're getting the best deal and where we're being provided responsible service. This is something that the free market does very well. So, yes, I would have extreme difficulty supporting this because in effect, we're saying that we can operate their businesses more wisely and more equitably than these operators can. And they have competition keeping them honest. So I agree with you on that. Councilmember Silva?
No, I was just going to thank staff and Councilmember Zoff for bringing this forward. I think this was just, for me anyway, it was more of an informative item to see who's out there and who's doing what, and this painted a picture. But with that, again, it was just an informative information item and it, you know, and then we'll move from that. We'll just go forward and on to the next item.
Okay, I'll take that recommendation at this stage. We'll go to item number 11, which is consideration of discontinuing 5% earnings reduction for the Fullerton Management Association and confidential non-represented employees and authorization to reinstate funds contributed by city employees. And Mr. Manfred.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I do have a brief presentation to recap some of the history of this item and to bring us to the recommendation tonight. So again, this is a consideration of discontinuing a 5% earnings reduction for the Fullerton Management Association, confidential non-represented employees, and to authorize to reinstate funds contributed by city employees. By way of background, the Fullerton Management Association comprises 54 classifications. It's a mix of non-safety, supervisory, and mid-management employees across all departments. You also have a smaller group of confidential non-represented employees that comprises 15 classifications. And it's not listed on this slide, but you also do have approximately 10 executive and council-appointed classifications with individual employment agreements that were also impacted by these pay reductions. Sorry, my first time with your clicker. And one more. There we go. Okay, so due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city did begin discussions with various labor groups in April of 2020 to discuss ways to achieve cost savings. During those discussions, executive employees accepted a 5% earnings reduction in May of 2020 and then accepted an increase to 10% earnings reduction in July of 2020. For confidential unrepresented employees and employees represented by the Fullerton Management Association, an earnings reduction of 5% was agreed upon effective September of 2020. Now, during the discussions with affected employees, it was understood by the employees that should the city receive COVID-related funding to backfill revenue loss, the city would discontinue the earnings reduction and reinstate the earnings that were reduced. This item was previously brought to you about a month ago, a little bit premature, I think, as ARPA money was still largely unknown. But now, things have kind of sorted themselves out. So on March 11th of 2021, ARPA was signed into law with $32.7 million expected for the city of Fullerton. Then on May 17th, 2021, the city did receive its first tranche of the ARPA money in the amount of approximately $16.3 million. So now the money is in the city's possession. And just to summarize, the total impact of the contributions contributed by employees, executive and council-appointed employees, they did contribute from May of 2020 to March of 2021. You'll note that the executive employees' pay reduction was already discontinued by action of the prior city manager. Confidential and non-represented employees and employees represented by Fullerton Management Association, they have contributed since September 2020. And if approved tonight, we'll discontinue those contributions effective May 28th. This slide summarizes the actual amount of the contributions. So anticipated earnings to date for executive and council-appointed, $113,000. Confidential, non-represented, $33,000. Fullerton Management Association, $121,000, for a total of $267,000 contributed. If approved by council tonight, the amount reinstated will actually be lower, and that's because there's been some attrition in employee groups that we wouldn't have to reinstate as much. The amounts you see are reduced down to $77,000 for executive and council-appointed, $27,000 for confidential, non-represented, and $113,000 for Fullerton Management Association for a total return of $217,000. So with that, there are three actions recommended tonight. There are two resolutions that would take care of the Management Association and then the confidential, non-represented employees. And then there would be a third action that would provide full reinstatement to all employees who contributed towards the pandemic-related cost savings measures. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manfred at this stage?
No questions, just a comment if I may, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I requested this item to be brought forward as that when this item came up the first time, the majority of council did feel that we needed to have the money in the bank before we made any contributions and so forth. So having said that, the money is in the bank, and I think this will allow the city to move forward and anyone who sits on council to acknowledge that we committed to X and we're actually implementing X and not changing our words. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move all three items before we get to public comments, if there's any public comments.
I would second that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, say just a few words.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank our staff. I know this has been a very difficult time for everyone. And I want to make sure that we acknowledge their work and their efforts throughout this last year. This was a voluntary cut that they took. They didn't have to. But many did take voluntary cuts and we appreciate. But many did take voluntary cuts and we appreciate that a lot. And it's only right to restore this pay and deservingly. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I would be tempted to ask public to come and comment at the microphone, but I have to speak really loudly, I think. And that being the case, do we have any callers? Madam clerk.
We do, Mr. Mayor. MLL?
Yes, hello, this is Munish again. Thank you for letting us comment on this. I wanted to say that I think it's absolutely imperative that these employee groups be allowed to get the agreed-upon money back because this isn't a, just a return of the money that's due to them. As far as taxpayers are concerned, a lot of us feel that it's actually a tax savings or money savings measure. Fullerton's already seen as a stepping stone city. So a lot of people will come here, get their experience, and then move on elsewhere. Anybody who looks at the numbers will see that even our higher-paid employees aren't always compensated at the same level that other cities will be willing to compensate at. So we get attrition in the effect of people that get their experience here may or may not be valuable employees, but at the end of the day, they will leave. With that, they take institutional knowledge that really we end up paying a lot for when you're trying to hire and train a new employee. When you look at the numbers of what is spent recruiting people, training people, as well as the frustration level that's incurred by taxpayers and we're having to deal with people that don't know the systems properly or may not know the historical knowledge why certain things are where we're not done. Those numbers are astronomical and a lot more than approximately $260,000 we're talking about. And when we talk about the morality of it, some of these groups voluntarily gave up that money to help avoid other people from being laid off. Others may or may not have had it forced upon them. I think that this is an equity issue and it's a moral issue. And I would beseech our city council to vote in favor of not only restoring or reversing the 5% cut, but paying back these employees for giving up money that they rightfully earned and rightfully are due. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers.
Okay, we will bring the item back to council. There is a motion and a second to approve all three segments of this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a roll. Madam clerk.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Item passes four zero.
Thank you, mayor and council.
And with that, we will adjourn this meeting and until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be June 15th.